Good morning, everyone. I'm calling this meeting to order. And at this time, I would ask you to rise as I call Reverend Alan Mosiman from Parkway Presbyterian Church for the invocation. If you would stay standing, please. Following the invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Texas flag. Thank you, Reverend.
Let us pray together. Loving God, you created us for life together. And life together can indeed bring us our greatest joy, our sense of peace and well-being. And yet, living together is never easy, whether it's a couple in an apartment that's too small, or a family in a house that seems too big, or the residents of a county nation in the whole world. So today, I pray for the members of this Commissioners' Court, for the county staff and all county employees and the work that they do to create systems and programs that help us to live together in harmony and support and embolden that sense of peace and well-being among all peoples, for indeed, you created us for life together. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, Reverend, for starting our day off right. And at this time, I will call this meeting to official commencement. It is October 16th, 2019, and the time for the clerk is 9:10 a.m. We are at the third floor at the Nuasis County Courthouse, 901 North Leopard. And I do certify, Madam Clerk, that all Commissioners are present, and therefore, we do have a quorum. And I'll call on Timothy for a safety briefing now.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Commissioners, ma'am. Today, we're meeting on the third floor of the Nuasis County Courthouse located at 901 Leopard Street. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium as you exit Commissioners' Court past the Human Resources Office. A fire extinguisher is located at the rear of the courtroom. In addition, there are five additional fire extinguishers located out in the third-floor atrium area immediately outside the courtroom. An AED is located on the right wall as you exit the courtroom near the Human Resources Office. Participants responsible for dialing 911 in event of emergency will be Tyner or Edward. Participants within the courtroom today who are CPR-certified are Deputy Vasquez. In case of an evacuation, our egress route will be down the atrium stairs immediately outside the courtroom. Proceed out the double doors located on the left side of the courthouse and muster across the street in the parking lot. In the event that we need to shelter in place, we will remain in the building and await further instructions from the Nuasis County Sheriff's Office. Our shared safety topics for today are the seasonal changes and the importance of proper hydration. That concludes my safety brief. Judge?
Thank you so much. Commissioners, in your packets, you've been presented with minutes from September 25th and October 4th, and I would entertain a motion at this time for their approval. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second on both minutes of September 25th and October 4th. Any discussion or corrections needed at this time? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Post same sign. Those minutes are approved. At this time, with your indulgence, Commissioners, I would like to advance letter G1. G1. And that is a presentation and recognition from the American Heart Association regarding the participation challenge of the American Heart Association Walk. And I think the court sees and recognizes Erin Wilder of the American Heart Association. Welcome. And Catherine, come on up.
Yeah, we want the mayor to bring... You got a little crow there for you, Mayor? Or is that...
Well, I just had prayer this morning, and I just remembered that we have fitly words. It will be graceful words with a little salt.
Joe, we won. We won.
No, no.
Good morning.
We had Heart Walk this past week, and we were so excited to have the presence that we had. But we had a little competition going on, and I'm going to turn it over to Catherine Geta to present the award to the county.
Thank you so much. Welcome, Catherine.
Thank you. Thanks for having us all here. It is our pleasure to award the 2019 Biggest Heart Challenge Award and Trophy to Nuasis County, County Judge Canales, the county Commissioners, to all of the employees, family, and staff that so proudly represented our county at the 2019 Heart Walk last Saturday. Thank you.
Awesome. Let's hear it, everybody. Thank you. And I just want to say, there were thousands... Come on up, Mayor. There were thousands of people at the Heart Walk this year. We started at Waterburger Field. It was a very warm day, but it was a very beautiful Corpus Christi day. And it was a lot of fun, and it was all for an incredible cause. And I want to thank, I know she's here somewhere, Julie Guerra, for... Hi, Julie. There you are. HR helped us publicize this countywide. I know that our staff also worked the phones and also decided that the YouTube video that Mayor McCombe and I did was the big hit. And so, we sent that out multiple times. And Mayor, it was in good fun, but the greatest news is that we did something really special. I think you probably tripled your number from last year. I mean, we both had... The competition worked, because the idea was that we got a lot more people to participate. And so, in that spirit, I'm grateful that we... That all of you participated, and we were successful in being the biggest heart, and grateful to the mayor for walking over and being with us this morning.
Well, it's with great humility. And because I'm such a gentleman...
You are.
This was your first competition as a new county judge.
Oh, here we go. Here we go. Here we go. Go ahead.
We allowed the county. But I think we're going to protest, because I understand that some of the Saturday workout programs from over in the next building were encouraged to sign up to come over and help you back to the numbers. We don't have that advantage, but I think you won it fair and square, maybe. But anyway, we want to share this trophy with you, because next year, when you bring it back, we want it to be in good shape, and it will adorn your...
Look at that thing.
Awesome. This is very special.
This is real stuff here.
Wow. That's beautiful, Mayor.
Judge, on behalf of the Heart Walk Challenge, and congratulations from the city. You won it fair and... You won it fair. And so, we want to give this to you to hold on to until next year, and then we'll welcome you back to City Hall, because I'm sure we'll win it back next year.
Oh, Judge, we want a picture with the mayor and that trophy. We really want a picture of that.
And you know what they say in basketball, Brent? We want to repeat.
That's right.
I'm coming down.
So I'll present you the trophy.
Yeah, let's... Come on, we got to get in that one.
Yeah.
I just had the judge in the mirror. Oh, man, I don't know. Catherine. You know what? You know that. Let me have it.
Come on. I got out there at 7:30.
Let me get in the back. Let me get close to you. We're running. We want to... I kind of hold it right here with you, Mayor, maybe just to look at you. Is this the front of it? Yeah, that's the front. Yeah, exactly.
Julie, Julie, we got to do... Julie.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Now, Judge, pull it away. Okay, there we go. One, two, three.
Hold up your fists.
Make sure we know which way it's going.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And thanks to the Heart Association. But really, this belongs on floor one for all the employees. And honestly, this is a testament to our heart. I'm really, really proud, Julie, of our entire staff, because they have really chosen wellness this year. This isn't just about the trophy. This is about our culture change here at the county. And it's going to mean better health for all of us, and most excitingly, a little bit of pride, I hope, that when we stick together and do things together as a team, then we become winners.
Judge, it's kind of about the trophies.
This belongs to you and the staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Woo! Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Well, that was fun. So I'm kind of downplaying it, but I would tell Ju... Ask Julie, the last week of the competition, what's our count? What's our count? And then, when we were about 40 ahead the last day, I told her, "That's not good enough. We need to be up by 100." And I think we ended up by about 100.
You know what happened?
150.
I got a complaint, because...
We got a complaint. Hold on.
Julie approached you. She didn't sign. You walk away, she walked right behind you until you signed her. She was putting pressure on us.
Well, the best... Right. Well, like I said, let's be inspired to win it again next year, and that was fun. Okay, I'm going to get us back in order.
Record-breaking, 4,000 people out there.
4,000. And also, you know, forgive me, I should have mentioned this. We also had some hard dollars as well that the county donated, and I'm sorry, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but whatever they were, Erin, there was more donated afterwards. So we'll get you those numbers. But we appreciate all those who made financial contributions. We all have somebody that we love. Some of us even here on this, you know, some of our colleagues who have gone through heart procedures and understand how important it is to create awareness and prevention. So, thank you so much. Yeah, that'd be great. I'm going to go back into order, and the first thing we're doing is recognizing, it'll be on F1 for the clerk, recognizing Ray High School Athletic Hall of Fame inductees. And Tyner, I bet you have a present... Go Ray.
And I don't think they're here today, Judge. We're going to do this...
Oh, they're not.
We're going to do this at a pep rally in November that everybody on the court is invited to attend. I'll be presenting that there at the pep rally, and love for you to come do that with me if you'd like to do that.
Be great.
I know. Your affiliation with Ray as well, obviously. Go ahead.
Whereas, the Texan Torch Foundation was created 20 years ago to provide scholarships to former Ray High School students and athletes continuing their academic careers through college courses, whereas the Texas Torch Foundation awards several scholarships on an annual basis. Whereas, in order to foster financial support for the Texan Torch Foundation, the Ray High School Athletic Hall of Fame was created. Each year, the Hall of Fame inductees, former outstanding Ray High School athletes, who then contribute funds to the Texan Torch Foundation Athletic Scholarship Program. Whereas, the Ray High School Athletic Hall of Fame will induct Jim Fisher, Billy Granberry, Mark Maxwell, Jerry Bell, and Ruben Bonilla Jr. on November 1st, 2019. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioners' Court of Nuasis County that Mr. Fisher, Mr. Granberry, Mr. Maxwell, Mr. Bell, and Mr. Bonilla be recognized for their athletic achievements resulting in their induction to the Ray High School Athletic Hall of Fame and for their contributions to the Texas Torch Foundation Athletic Scholarship Program in supporting the college careers of fellow former Ray High School students and athletes.
No move.
Hearing a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Post same sign. I think Jerry Bell still holds the record for passing yards. I got a chance to be there when he was throwing that football, and he's just... He was an incredible talent to watch. And so, I'm excited, and thank you for your involvement, Tyner, in the Texan Torch Foundation.
When I was a senior judge, we did win district.
Hey, remember, I was there. I remember.
I keep waiting for that Tyner Little name to come across on the Hall of... But it hasn't. I haven't seen it yet.
Well, he should be there. Thank you so much for that. And of course, Brent, I hope that works out with our schedule to go back to our alma mater. Okay, next, we have... Let me get us back in line here. Oh, wonderful. We have a very special presentation for the U.S. Geography Olympiad 2019. Get this, national champion. Not local, not state, our national U.S. Geography Champion. And Ashrith Reddy is that fabulous person, but you have some things to read.
I do. They may want to come stand.
That would be lovely. It'd be great. Are your parents here with you today? Would you like to invite them? The truth is, I know how proud they must be, so it's nice that they stand with you. And I think you also have your... You have teachers or coaches with you? Okay? Great.
This is a Commissioners' Court resolution in recognition of Baker Middle School student Ashrith Reddy. Whereas, Ashrith Reddy is a seventh-grade student at Marvin Baker Middle School, CCISD. His interests include tennis, music, travel, and weather. Ashrith is a straight-A student and has many, many accomplishments. Whereas, elementary school achievements are fourth grade, first-place award in the National Social Studies League and National Language Arts League Award, fifth grade, first-place NCGE Award, National Geography Challenge, and the National Current Events League Award. Whereas, Baker Middle School sixth-grade achievements are 2018 International Geography B U.S. National Championships semifinalist Elementary Division, 2018 U.S. Geography Olympiad National Championships, fourth place, sixth-grade classification, 2018-2019 Baker Middle School Recognition of Athletic Achievement in Tennis. Whereas, Ashrith Reddy has many accomplishments for seventh grade. 2019 National Geography B State Qualifier, top 100 participants picked after testing all the Texas schools. 2018-2019 National Geography B Outstanding Achievements as School Champion. International Geography B U.S. National Championship, 2019 finalist, seventh-grade division. Whereas, the most recent accomplishment for Ashrith Reddy is the U.S. Geography Olympiad 2019 National Champion, seventh-grade division. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Nuasis County Commissioners' Court that we hereby recognize Ashrith Reddy for his outstanding elementary and middle school athletic and academic accomplishments from fourth grade to seventh grade.
Can you imagine what the accomplishments are going to be from seventh to 12? Ashrith, I don't want to put you on the spot, but would you get closer to the... So the video can capture you, so everybody that's watching us all over the county can see you on television. And would you be so kind as to introduce the special people that have accompanied you here today?
Certainly. This is my mother, Vina Reddy. This is my father, Vishna Reddy. And then, this is my school assistant principal, Ms. Swanson, and my school principal, Mr. Dobbins, and all of who have supported me very dearly throughout my accomplishments.
That is awesome.
Ashrith, I mean, it's... Listen, I'm... I went to Baker Junior High. I was a Bronx, just like you. And I was also in the Athena program, just like you. And I had amazing coaches, and I played tennis also at Baker. So if I had just won the national championship, we would be twins. But I love travel, and I love the worlds, cultures, and countries. And the fact that you now know so much about them is going to help you in your life. And I hope that you can share the geography that you've learned with everybody around you. You know which place always fascinates me? Mauritius.
Really?
Yes. Do you want to tell everybody? Because how many people does Raise Your Hands know where Mauritius is?
There's a rub on you.
Okay. Do you want to tell everybody where Mauritius is?
Okay. Mauritius is located in the Indian Ocean off the coast of Madagascar.
Yes.
It's an island nation, and it's known as being a tropical getaway for many people.
Yes. Yes, it is.
Did you plan that, or did he know that?
No. No, I didn't. I want you to know that when you're a lawyer, you learn one thing: Never ask a question that you don't know the answer to, and never put a witness on the stand unless you think you understand the answer that they're going to be given. But you know what? I have so much pride in you, so much faith in your accomplishments, that I knew I could give you any place in the world, and you would know exactly where it is. And as I said, I met a woman from Mauritius, and it always... After she spoke to me about it, I always wanted to go there. So I knew you would know exactly where it was, and I kind of knew that nobody else would know either. Now, I want to present to you on behalf of Nuasis County, all 360,000-plus-plus of us, and these Commissioners' Court, a certificate that was read by our court manager to you. And I would be so honored if you would allow me to take a picture with you, your family, and your school principals. Would that be all right? Thank you so much. I'll be right down. You know what? That would be nice, too. There's a lot of us.
Jack? You didn't know where Mauritius is?
I passed by there. I thought you passed by there. What are you saying? It's between Rob's...
It's Rob's down Bishop's. That's a good one.
When I was going around, I saw us.
It's Dr. Reddy. We're so proud.
Thank you.
She's so proud. Ashrith. I want to talk to you more. I would have fun. I would have fun talking to you. I'm so proud of you.
Congratulations.
It's so nice to know you. Congratulations on your new school. I'm sorry I missed it, but I'm going to have to come by and get a tour. All my... Well, not all, but my oldest children went also to make a Bronx. Ashrith, on behalf of the county, this is a certificate, and it reads a little bit of what Mr. Little said about your accomplishments, fourth through seventh grade. Here's what I want to do. When you are a senior in high school, I can't wait to see what I write about you then. Let's turn it around, and I'm going to slide right here.
We can see you. Two, one, two, three. One, two, three.
So they gave you the day off today?
Just so proud. And I'll see you soon, probably. Thank you also. And we hope you have a good day.
Thanks for having us here.
That's great. And it gets... Because the world is changing so fast. So as we have sadly revolutions, and, you know, I have the most magnificent globe, but none of it's accurate anymore. You know? Well, I like studying old names, too. Some of the people, they... Particularly the African nations. I'd like to visit with you. Yeah, Baker, we're trying to... We put you on the... So yesterday, we actually had a club meeting where I was with it, and I was...
Just don't ask us where country is.
We thought it was somewhere in the city.
But we know our precincts. Thank you, Ashrith. Thank you, Vina. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. There's a scholarship in that boy's future. Maybe we'll start having geography trivia here every...
Stump the judge.
Stump the judge.
Stick to the math.
Okay.
We need a math.
We do. I was just about... I'm now keeping a little...
Motion to pass.
I need to...
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Post same sign. All right. And Tyner, will you take us through the next one, which is National Disability Employment Awareness Month? And if we have any folks that are here...
We do. Come on up, y'all.
I would love to recognize you, and if you join Mr. Little at the podium, he will read the resolution. And then, if one of you would like to make a comment afterwards, we would be happy to hear about your work. Thank you, Tyner. You can proceed.
I'll begin, Judge. This is Disability Employment Awareness Month, October 2019. Whereas workplaces welcoming of the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. Whereas, in this spirit, Nuasis County is recognizing National Disability Employment Awareness Month this October to raise awareness about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of people with disabilities. Whereas, activities during this month will reinforce the value and talent with disabilities add to our... Excuse me. And talent, people with disabilities add to our workplaces and communities and affirm Nuasis County's commitment to an inclusive community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Nuasis County hereby proclaims October 2019 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in Nuasis County. And in doing so, the court calls upon employers, schools, and other community organizations in Nuasis County to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities and to advance this year's theme, "The Right Talent Right Now Throughout the Year." Now, Judge, thankfully, Coastal Bend Center for Independent Living and others, their poster came in on time, and mine did not, from the governor's office. And for the last eight years, along with this item, and y'all can vote on this if you like, but I think Karen is going to describe this year's art contest winner, if y'all want to do it that way.
Sure.
Welcome.
Thank you. This is our poster.
Beautiful.
This was art completed by Megan Bagi Galupu, and I'm so sorry for butchering her name, but she's a person with a disability. She's employed, and she's a perfect example of a person with a disability who is doing great things. So we're going to leave this with you guys.
It's beautiful. Thank you. I do need a motion just for housekeeping, and I've got it. How about a second?
Second.
Second? Okay. And Karen, go ahead.
Thank you, Judge Canales and Commissioners. My name is Karen Salazar Vega. I represent the Coastal Bend Center for Independent Living, where it's not only our mission to help people with disabilities to achieve their goals, but to employ individuals with disabilities. More than 50% of our staff and Board of Directors identify as people with disabilities, and of that, we are certainly proud. We're here to deliver a message, "The Right Talent Right Now," because we cannot afford to dismiss talent which translates to success in the workplace. The United States Bureau of Labor Statistics reports that in 2018, less than 20% of people with disabilities were employed. Those without disabilities were at 65.7%. Clearly, there are challenges. We can all take steps to consider and hire qualified persons with disabilities, plan for it all year, not just in October. Let's work together to embrace inclusion and empower all. Thank you.
Thank you.
May we take a photo?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, I was just about to say that I have a very lovely certificate as well that encompasses the resolution that Tyner read, and anything we can do to promote Disability Employment Awareness Month, we would be happy to do so here in Nuasis County Courthouse.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Post same sign. Now, please come up. Oh, is too many of them?
Whatever's easier, guys. All right, well, then, we'll just come down.
Should come down in the well? Is that okay?
Oh, gotcha. Thank you. I want to show this to you, and I'll hold it. And it's really beautiful. The color is fantastic. This contest was local or statewide? National? Where is she?
Yeah.
Anyway, it was fantastic.
Two years ago, we actually had a local artist win.
Wow.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. We got a professional here.
It's only... Okay, straight, much easier. Stand up. One more. Okay.[1729.12]
Thank you. I want to show this to you, and I'll hold it. And it's really beautiful. It's fantastic. This contest was local or statewide? National? Where is she from? Oh, you're fantastic.
Two years ago, we actually had a local artist win.
Wow.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. We got a professional here.
If only. If only. Okay, straight, straight up. Stand up. One more. Okay. Cheers.
I think all of my partners are here. Thank you all. Who's on the air? So, I'm really thankful. I was worried about where she's gonna wind up. But "The Right Talent Right Now." I don't know if anyone has noticed, we're still in the process. It's not quite a finished product. But one of our goals at the County Judge's Office is that we do so many wonderful proclamations and resolutions, and I want them to live way beyond a court. And so, we're in the process of putting monitors downstairs where we can showcase some of the awareness that is being promoted all around our county. And so, when you come in, you can not only receive information about where to go and maybe some tips about safety and security, but you'll also be able to have promotional pieces for your civic and your nonprofit organizations displayed prominently. And that way, the thousands of people that come through our courthouse every week will also be messengers for you. So, I'm excited about that. And as I said, don't judge us right now. It's still a work in progress, but it's getting there. At this time, Tyner, will you wrap up F with number five in the opposition to Texas Windstorm Insurance Association? That would be the acronym, TWIA, Premium Rate Increases, which we are all against. And I think here representing, am I, do we have anybody? John, that's what I was thinking, but I didn't ask. Court recognizes Chamber of Commerce Executive Director John Leroux and Ginny Cross, also with the Corpus Christi Chamber Governmental Liaison and Affairs. And you're welcome to come up and make comment after Tyner finishes reading.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do this one, Judge. We do have Park Board also right before this one, but we'll go ahead and do this one.
Did I miss one? I sure did. I apologize.
We'll go ahead and do this.
So sorry.
Whereas Hurricane Harvey made landfall as a Category Four hurricane on the Texas coast on Friday, August 25th, 2017, and battered and drenched Texas for days before finally moving out of the state. The heavy rains from Harvey caused catastrophic flooding throughout the Coastal Bend region, the Houston area, and southeast Texas, and was the first major hurricane to make landfall along the middle Texas coast since Hurricane Celia in 1970. Whereas Governor Greg Abbott first issued a disaster declaration on August 23rd, 2017 for Aransas, Austin, Bee, Brazoria, Calhoun, Chambers, Colorado, DeWitt, Fayette, Fort Bend, Galveston, Goliad, Gonzalez, Harris, Jackson, Jefferson, Jimwells, Karnes, Claiberg, LaVaca, Liberty, Live Oak, Matagorda, Nuaces, Refugio, San Patricio, Victoria, Waller, Wharton, and Wilson Counties. Whereas more than two years after the storm, many of the Hurricane Harvey disaster declared communities are struggling to rebuild. They have TWIA and other insurance claims unresolved. Whereas the Texas Windstorm Insurance Association Board of Directors voted 5-4 to increase rates for 2019 by 10% at the July 31, 2018 Quarterly Board Meeting. This action was forestalled by Governor Greg Abbott in order to allow the Texas Legislature to address TWIA's actuarial deficiency. Whereas the '86 Texas Legislature did act by passing House Bill 1900, which creates a legislative funding oversight committee to study TWIA's rate adequacy. Whereas the legislative oversight committee must be appointed and given time to act before TWIA activates a new rate increase. Whereas there are sufficient premiums, assessments, and reinsurance to cover potential TWIA liabilities for 2020. Now therefore, be it that the Commissioners Court of Nuaces County hereby encourages the TWIA Board of Directors to show restraint and allow the will of the legislature to be fully implemented before TWIA votes for a rate increase that could significantly stifle rebuilding and rehabilitating homes, businesses, and lives along the Texas coast.
So moved.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Post same sign. John, I think it's worthy of you coming up and letting everybody know about the great press conference and all the entities that gathered together to show solidarity.
Thank you, Judge. I want to thank the Commissioners Court, not just for this week's press conference, but all of the previous activities that we have. The county has been there with us throughout this. I'll just make, I think your resolution said it all, but just make a couple points. This is really redlining of 14 counties along the coast. That's what they're doing. And I don't think we, as a state, really should stand for that. If this continues, I think we're gonna have to consider some sort of legal action because it's very discriminatory. They're targeting us. They're not targeting anywhere else. They have weather problems throughout this state. Nobody else gets targeted like we do. So, we really appreciate the support that we're getting here. We're on our way to Austin tomorrow. This actuarial committee is meeting, we think. They're meeting by, believe it or not, you all with open meetings would recognize this meeting. We don't even know what room yet, in a room, in a building, by phone. We don't know if anybody's gonna be there, but we are all gonna be there. I want to thank also the city, the surrounding counties. Obviously, our congressional delegation led by Todd Hunter have been instrumental in keeping this in the forefront. So, we promise you, we'll keep fighting this as long as it takes.
Are they not subject to Open Meetings Act?
They are technically not, but they seem to try to follow it, but not very well, as you can tell by this.
That's a clear violation.
They are in violation, but they are not technically a government entity. They're set up by the Insurance Department, and there's a lot of conflicts. There was a new conflict of interest law, as you know, passed by the Legislature and went into effect September 1st. They have members on that committee who work for insurance companies who benefit from this because they sell reinsurance for this and they make a profit off that. We have serious questions.
Judge, this is just an ongoing scam with TWIA. This has been a ridiculous nightmare, and I appreciate, and I hate to always just, you know, when we get into a fight, we look for legal action, but this has been a 30-year fight.
Yeah, this just didn't start.
And they're just trying to wear us down. You know, they just keep thinking if they do it in the dead of night, they'll wear us down, they'll do these kind of things. And TWIA needs to be retooled. We are never gonna get anywhere unless other people in this state pay their share for their wind events. And until we have a truly catastrophic pool, and not just coast pool, we're never gonna get this fixed. And the Legislature, unfortunately, there's enough anti-coast and/or representatives who don't want their, you know, people to pay, it gets shot down. And so, something's gonna have to happen, and it may just have to be that this is unconstitutional, discriminatory, whatever legal action is necessary. It's come to that point. And again, I don't say that lightly. I'm a lawyer, but that doesn't mean I like to litigate just for fun. It's not fun. But literally, I went to work for Todd Hunter in 1989, and I've been involved in this issue in some way, shape, or form since 1989. That is most of my adult life. And that's ridiculous, and it's not going away. And it is discriminatory. And if we don't do something significant about this, we're just gonna be fighting this every legislative session, every, and this isn't even a legislative session. They voted in August, no rate hike. What's happened between August and October that they're meeting again? It's a scam, and that is exactly what this is. So, I appreciate the Chamber continuing to facilitate, and we will, whatever you need the county to do, at least from my standpoint, but this County Commissioners Court has been strongly, strong on this issue because it affects all of, all of our constituents.
Thank you. We're standing on top of it.
We really appreciate it.
We hope our resolution can provide some strength to the other resolutions.
Don't worry.
And keep us posted. We would invite you back for an update.
Thank you.
If there are any other questions, Commissioners, I know John would be happy to answer. Okay. At this time, we do need to, do you have a question?
Did we make a motion?
Yeah, we did. We moved.
We have a motion and a second.
I thought you did.
We voted, didn't we? Yeah, we voted.
Yes, okay.
Thank you again.
Okay, thank you so much. Got a very important Nuaces County Coastal Parks Board anniversary coming up. I know we have Scott Cross, Director of Coastal Parks. Come on up, Scott, just to get ready. And Tyner's gonna read a resolution, and I actually have a beautiful copy of it as well that I'd like to present. If any Park Board member is here with us today, we would invite them to celebrate as well.
Judge, I just want to thank you for your leadership on bringing this to the forefront. This is definitely a significant anniversary, and I appreciate your leadership in taking a role in this.
You're so welcome. It's with love that I do it. Absolutely love this anniversary.
Celebrating the 70th anniversary of the Nuaces County Coastal Parks Board. Whereas the Nuaces County Board of Park Commissioners was created in 1949 by order of the Commissioners Court pursuant to the statutory predecessor to Chapter 321 of the Local Government Code, allowing counties that border the Gulf of Mexico and have within its boundaries one or more islands or parts of islands suitable for park purposes that may act under this chapter for the purpose of improving, equipping, maintaining, financing, and operating one or more parks on those islands. Whereas the adopted mission statement for the Coastal Parks Department, under the leadership of the Park Board of Commissioners, is to provide a quality recreational experience for both present and future generations of residents, taxpayers, and visitors through responsible utilization of strategic Nuaces County assets, the conservation and management of coastal natural resources and compatible public access, and providing for the changing recreational needs by optimizing use of partnerships and funding opportunities. Whereas the Board of Park Commissioners, over its 70-year history, has been responsible for historic events and facilities along the Nuaces County coastline to include, but not limited to, the Causeway from the mainland to North Padre Island, JP Luby Surf Pier, Horace Caldwell Pier, Bob Hall Pier, IB McGee Beach Park, Padre Baye Park, Bates Newport Beach, Zon Road, Packery Channel Nature Park, PJ Marina along the Redfish Bay Causeway, Lighthouse Trails Kayak Park, and at one time, through the Coastal Parks Department, under its purview, was responsible for the oversight of all beach maintenance for the entire Nuaces County coastline. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Commissioners Court of Nuaces County that October 19, 2019, will mark the official 70th anniversary of the Nuaces County Board of Park Commissioners, where the court encourages all patrons of Nuaces County Coastal Parks to visit our coastal parks and enjoy these world-renowned recreational and educational facilities by participating in the celebration festivities and attend the dedication ceremony at Bob Hall Pier at 2:30 PM that same day.
So moved.
I need a second. I've got a motion and a second, and we'll call for discussion and ask Scott to make some comments.
I wrote that.
Beautiful. Well done, sir.
Scott, would you just, I left my program. Would you kind of just tell everybody what we're doing that day to, from some free things and stuff like that, please?
Okay, so we're gonna start the day off at 10 o'clock over at Packery Channel Nature Park. We've got some tours that are gonna start over there and some educational sessions on basically that park and the habitat and the birding elements over there. Many of you may not know the Texas Sea Life Center, which is part of us too. We work with them. They're a nonprofit that runs the facility over there where they're rescuing all kinds of marine environment, critters, turtles, birds. They have a raptor house over there where they're rehabbing birds and stuff, much like what the ARC does and much like what the state aquarium does. And so, it's really neat. We're gonna have tours going on over there too for people, that facility. If you've never been through there, it's really worth it. It's really very interesting. And then, so we'll have that going on. I've talked with Donna Shaver down at the National Seashore. She's gonna come up and do some total outreach because we did have a pretty hard time this past spring going into Memorial Day with a bunch of stranding with juvenile green sea turtles over Packery Channel. And they got some person that dresses up in a turtle kind of mascot thing that's gonna be there. We're gonna have them at the pier too. And then we'll have our event at the pier where we're just inviting all the current and past Park Board members and elected officials and agencies that we've worked with. I've reached out to all of them. Corpus Chambers helped get the word out for us and get our flyer out. Port A Chambers done the same. And Tyner has helped with that as well to get the information out there, so. And then we'll have some static displays. We went back and we found some historical pictures of the board with various, you know, big-ticket projects such as the piers. You know, those are iconic. You're the only one with those kind of piers on the Texas coast, period. And so, and we're the only one with a pier in Port A right now. The rest of them got blown away. So, it's gonna be really interesting. You know, there's a lot of history I still discover every day. I didn't know that we were doing it. And, you know, some of the stuff they did back then, we could not do now. I can guarantee you that.
We have some free admissions, I think?
Yeah, free. It's free? Yep.
On the pier?
Yep.
I think it's for...
Port A and Rockport. Port A and Corpus.
What days?
That day, Saturday.
So, Saturday, for anybody who's watching, if you want to go to the pier that day, we're doing free admissions on the piers, those particular days to commemorate as well.
And it should be a really nice day. The weather's looking pretty good with this front coming through. So, Bob, do you want to say anything?
Invite all the Commissioners and the Judge. I know you may be out of town, but anybody who's here, we'd love for y'all to come out and be a part of the ceremony that's at 2 o'clock. I'm sorry, I don't have my calendar.
Yeah, the resolution had 2:30, but we're probably gonna kick it off about 2 o'clock just because the folks that are hosting us up there asked if we would kind of move it back a little bit because one of them may be going to the Astros game if it carries over that long.
But we're very grateful to Dr. Needham. Bob, please relay our congratulations to the entire board and, you know, for really just being the greatest stewards of what is the jewel of, and the pride of the Gulf Coast, which is that coastline. And it's just, it's really incredible. You know, I don't think we realize how other people that come and visit us, you know, think about the coast. They're just amazed and in awe. We had a group here in the courthouse from Atlanta, and they were just thrilled to be able to be on our coastline, so.
Well, good. Well, thank you very much for that, Judge, and it's an honor to serve. And I know that I speak for all of the Commissioners. They feel the same way. And want to thank the court for its continued support of the board and the department and the coastal parks. And I will certainly relay your congratulations.
Thank you.
And I want to personally congratulate Scott and all the members of the Department of Coastal Parks because they do a fantastic job.
They really do.
Makes our job very easy. So, thank you very much.
And I know you would want to say thank you to, you have some amazing interns, graduate students. You know, so much of the resources that we have come from what I call our extra, you know, personnel, and we're very grateful. And I still want to see that field guide because I think that, how are we working? How is that coming along?
Yeah, actually, I was working with Callan on that, Callan on that yesterday, and she's almost finished with it. She wanted it, it's really unique. It's gonna be one of a kind because it's never been done in this kind of detail, especially for somebody to use it and actually check off the various species of birds that we have that's specific to our area. There's not one out there with this kind of detail. She was like, well, let's sell it and make some revenue. I said, let's copyright it and keep it for ourselves.
I'm glad you mentioned that. So, I wanted to talk to you about making sure that we keep our intellectual property. So, that's important. And you need to visit with the county attorney. She can help you get that done. And then I want to talk about doing it in a way where we can maybe help you publish it, you know, so that it becomes a little book. But then the most exciting thing that I wanted to announce is that, and sadly, I do have a conflict that day, but I have been thinking about a way I could honor Coastal Parks and the 70th anniversary. And so, what I would like to do is I am gonna send the oldest member of the Baye family.
Oh, great.
She'll agree to it. Hope she's watching.
Grandma?
Yes. I want to see if maybe, you know, she might go out.
And your mom?
I will try to get everybody that I can out there, which is really very special. But most importantly, I think what you've done with this field guide should be submitted. NACO is the National Association of Counties, and they have a contest every year. They ask you to submit your most innovative project that your county has done. And I believe that Coastal Parks Field Guide is worthy of our submission. And I'd like to ask Commissioner Chesney for his support in that effort, that we submit the field guide when it's done to NACO.
Okay.
And we can do more than one submission, Commissioners, but that this one is the first one that I believe represents the best of our innovation. It's something that nobody told us to do. Nobody told us how to do it, and it's completely unique. And I think that it's worthy of a national award. So, if you'd pass that on to Callan, it'll make her keep on writing.
I will.
Okay, I have this to present to you, Scott, and to Bob. And you get a lot of pictures with us, but we're happy to take one. Okay.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner does want one. You're right.
Okay.
I just didn't want to make sure that...
This is what y'all get to look at it.
Come this way. I'll get between Bob and you. Come this way, I'll get between Bob and you. Is this good?
Mm-hmm.
Hold that.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
For a listen now? Thanks, guys.
Hey, you guys heard.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Judge.
It's gonna be great.
Thank you, Judge. Well, we were thinking maybe use the video message that we could play on a screen, that would be good.
Let's do that, let's do it today.
Okay.
That's great.
Thank you.
She's pretty good.
Are we invited? Judge, we still need to vote.
Yes, I know, I need all those in favor of the resolution celebrating Coastal Parks to say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay. Um...
Thank you.
Appreciate that. I'm gonna move into public, I'm gonna move into public comment at this time, I do have several people on the list, just to remind everybody, I will call your name, you'll come forward, if you wouldn't mind for the record stating your name and your address, that'll, the clerk will certainly appreciate that. And then, we do have a time limit, much like all other governmental entities, and, but we intend to be very respectful of your comments, and please remember that during public comment, we are not allowed to answer you unless, of course, we sign up for public comment and wish to address the issue. At this time, I'll be calling Johnny Martinez as our first speaker.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
First of all, I'd like to mention that Ms. Sands would be here today, but her father is sick, so she's in the hospital with him, so our thoughts are with her. Second, I'd like to just remind everybody that early voting starts next week for the New Acis County Joint Constitutional Election, Monday, the 21st, and that runs through November 1st.
Very important, and they can find their early voting locations online?
Correct, actually, it's a county-wide voting location.
Oops, I signed up, sorry about that, lauda, apologize.
We do have 11 early voting locations that run for two weeks, and then, we have county-wide voting locations on Election Day, which is 82 locations. And all the information is on our website, on the Elections Department link, and you can find your sample ballots and any information on the election there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Court is now gonna call Ms. Suzanne Taylor.
Excuse me, Judge?
Yes.
I'm gonna need to be signed up under another item.
No worries, I'll make that note. Sam Dalton, you knew.
Because my sister-in-law said that, I have the same message.
Okay, how about Archie Acosta?
I'm here for another agenda.
Another item, okay. Mr. Summerlin, I saw you, yes. Earl Summerlin for the record.
My name is Earl Summerlin, I reside at 1017 Daumie Drive in Portland, Texas, and I'm a member of the Citizens Alliance for Fairness and Progress. Judge, Commissioners, at the last meeting of the Port Commission held on September 17, Dell Richardson reported on the voluntary relocation program and those who for one reason or another will remain in the Hillcrest neighborhood. After her presentation, Commissioner Bowers stated, "We leave a wasteland useful to no one, and the only solution is condemnation." He also stated that the city will not want to provide services to the Hillcrest community. How much more disrespectful can a Commissioner be to those who chose to stay, comparing where they have made their home, perhaps for generations, to a barren land? The park named after Dr. Williams is not a wasteland, the historic cemetery is certainly not a barren land. If the port does its job and the city does theirs, Hillcrest can be a sustainable community neighborhood. In fact, that is what the two-party agreement between TechDOT and Federal Highways contemplated, a community sustainability plan for those remaining in the neighborhood, a plan to address an array of sustainability enhancements aimed at creating a healthy neighborhood, a plan for continued community cohesion with provisions for accessibility to parks and community services and historic preservation, that's direct from the agreement. Yet, Commissioner Bowers stated the only solution is condemnation, sending a shock wave through the neighborhood. Commissioner Bowers' statement on the record is viewed by the residents as the port's position. His comments offended residents in Hillcrest, his comments raised unnecessary concerns about the neighborhood. Commissioner Bowers is your appointee to the port, he is not accountable to the residents of Hillcrest, he is only accountable to you, and we ask that you hold him accountable for his statements in a manner that represents and recognizes the gravity of his statements and assures the residents of Hillcrest that his statements are not reflective of this court's position on the future for the residents who remain, and that you support the sustainability efforts being developed for the neighborhood by TechDOT, the Hillcrest Residents Association, and other partners, which is supposed to include the Port of Corpus Christi. Thank you very much, Judge.
At this time, Pastor Carrington.
Good morning, Judge, and to all the Commissioners, and to all who are present, my name is Adam Carrington, and I am the very proud pastor of Brooks, Amy, Warshaston, and the Hillcrest community. I live at 2949 Riverbend Court, I am also the Chair of the Community Advisory Board, representing the Hillcrest community. When the voluntary acquisition relocation program begun, the Port of Corpus Christi as a part of the full-party agreement expressed to the Hillcrest residents they would be treated with respect, dignity, transparency, and fairness. However, it appears that the port's position has changed based on the comments made by Port Commissioner Bowers, when he mentioned that Hillcrest is a wasteland, not worth anything, and ultimately should be condemned. I reminded the port on yesterday, there are families who did not participate in the voluntary acquisition relocation program. I also mentioned that disheartening words from Commissioner Bowers suggest that the port no longer respects these law-abiding, tax-paying Hillcrest citizens, nor do they care what happens to them as long as the port acquires property, the property that it needs by any means necessary, even if that means partnering with the City of Corpus Christi condemning the Hillcrest neighborhood. As a matter of fact, the city has already begun issuing or posting structurally unsafe warning signs on property in the Hillcrest community. We believe these recent notices are retaliation against the Hillcrest community, especially those who chose not to participate in the voluntary acquisition relocation program. So my question to the port on yesterday, what is your position now that the voluntary relocation program has ended, since no other port commissioner nor port staff person said anything denying Commissioner Bowers' opinion and position of the Hillcrest community? I asked the port, is it your position to condemn the Hillcrest community and force the remaining residents out from their homes, or is it to honestly treat them with respect, dignity, transparency, and fairness? Again, no response from any port commissioner nor port staff. So I'm here today asking this court to hold the Commissioners accountable and ask them to clarify their position regarding the Hillcrest community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Rick Adams, I do see that there's an agenda item attached, is that correct?
I can state it as an agenda.
Absolutely, I'm just, for purposes of clarification. I've signed up for public comment as well as Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioners, would you like anybody else for me to, okay, Commissioner Gonzalez at this time?
I just want to say, you gentlemen, I'm with you, I'm really ashamed, I'm really embarrassed that Commissioner Bowers would make that kind of a statement. That land, that property in that area are very dear to our hearts, too. You know, we fought a lot of battles over there, and especially when the police department, that was one of the areas that we really protected a lot. So I want you to understand that he doesn't speak for us, we speak for ourselves, you know, and I don't agree with what he says, and I don't support what he says, you know, and I will hold him accountable for that. So I want you to know that, so let's take it back to the citizens, and really, I'd like to apologize, not on his behalf, but just in the behalf that this happened. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, at this time, I'm gonna call Commissioner Carolyn Vaughn, who has also signed up for public comment.
That's in my precinct, and I apologize, I do not, that is not reflective of my attitude for that neighborhood. Thank you.
Just doing my housekeeping here. I was present yesterday at the Port Commission meeting, and I heard your comments and heard some of the citizens' comments as well, and actually spoke with Mr. Williams in my office this morning, and shared with him my concern, my heart, and a lot of my mind, and I'd like to share that with the audience and both of you today. I also believe that that is not the position of this court, but I do not speak for all of the court, but I can tell you that I was very intimately involved with the relocation program. I sat on the committee to help select DRA, Jill Richardson, even though I have left the port as a Commissioner, I've continued to stay updated, to make certain that those precepts of respect, dignity, transparency, and fairness are adhered to. So imagine the heaviness yesterday on my heart when I heard Ms. Barbara, I'm trying to remember her last name, I know her name was Barbara, because I made a mental note of that, was it Moody, no?
Major.
Major, Ms. Barbara Major spoke first, how I wanted to get up and hug her and say, this is not representative of either the port's position, I know that because I stay in close contact as county judge with the executive staff. I also know that I received a very personal phone call from our recent appointee, Ms. Hilliard, who was extremely upset and wanted to know what she could do, what we could do personally to rectify the matter. So I am now calling as Barbara Canales and as New Acis County Judge for the clarification from executive staff and from the Port Commission, and to have them clarify and to denounce that statement. It is absolutely imperative to the future of our community, to our integrity, and to the word that we gave you, and I know that they will do so swiftly, because I have faith in that they do believe wholeheartedly in those precepts. On another note, there are some opportunities, I believe, for better communication, so that, I don't know if you would consider this, but I've often wondered why the county doesn't have a representative on that neighborhood, that cab board, and perhaps that we could do much more togetherness if I could be a part, or I could designate kind of an alternate, myself, and maybe an alternate, Ms. Vaughn, who's precinct it lies in, so that we can talk about the future in a positive and in a positive way. And so, I hope that you will, that you will think about my words and my reflection, as I have thought about them ever since I left yesterday.
Judge, I...
I'll sign you up.
No, I don't, I don't need to be signed up, this is just direction that we as county, that can give our county staff, asking our county attorney to review what took place, if what the statements are accurate, do they violate any kind of code of ethics, and if so, that needs to be brought forward to this court for review as our appointee. So that's not a public comment, that is a direction to our staff following what our public comment allows, and I would like that on the future agenda to discuss what our options are, I want clarification, exact, specific clarification as far as statements, and if there is action that we need to take based on this information coming to light, that we, as a commission, take action on our appointee.
Judge, can you just sign me up?
I will.
And I just want to, because I don't want my silence to reflect anything other than my complete agreement with your statements, and so I just would add that to that, if those statements are as have been represented, what you have said is appropriate and I agree with.
Thank you, and just as, to wrap up on my public comments and to move forward with our agenda, I just want to note for the record that, because I'm so familiar with the operating rules yesterday, their public comment, I have a lot more flexibility here, I signed myself up and I can make a statement, I just want both Mr. Summerlin and Pastor Carrington to know that at the Port of Corpus Christi during public comment, there is no response afterwards, there's just, there's no response at all, that's under the rules that we operate under, or that I operated under when I was there, and I don't believe they have changed. Okay, I have no other public comment signee, but I will ask one last time if there are others. Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna move on to the consent agenda and ask that the consent agenda be reviewed for A through U, A through U, and I have some of my own that I'm pulling for clarification, and I'll list those at this time, and that is E, F, I. I'll take any others from any other...
I have Q, S, and T.
Q, S, and T, S is in Sam? Okay, Madam Clerk, I am just refining it as E, F, I, and Q, S, T, and I'll take a motion at this time for all others to be approved. And a second? All those in, any, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? I heard right ayes. Opposed, same sign. Okay, I think that I will take E and ask Michael to come forward. Michael, the only reason I'm doing this is as I see projects, Commissioners, that fall into what I at least had presented to you as part and parcel, along with Lockwood Andrews as a capital improvement program, I think it's important that we identify it, so that if you, if it's an opportunity to acknowledge that there are dollars in our, in our recent borrowing that can be attributed, in other words, let's start keeping a note. So for example, parking lot was identified in the capital improvement plan, and therefore, when, Michael, you're gonna tell us about how much this is, and then, we're gonna make, I hope, a recommendation that those be appropriated from our, from our funding source.
Correct. So this particular item is where we're asking for approval of our method of procurement, request for competitive bids for the New Acis County Courthouse parking lot site improvements, and authorizing the purchasing agent to publish a notice. The scope of work for this base bid includes modification to several site elements, including replacement of sidewalks that are non-ADA compliant, these modifications will require removal of existing sections of sidewalks that are non-compliant, and placement of new concrete sidewalks to meet the requirements of the ADA. There are pavement modifications to allow for ADA parking, and they require removal of existing sections of pavement, along with a replacement of new pavement with revised elevations. There also is an addition of ADA accessible aisles and special pavement markings, in addition, there will be a new ADA signage on this project. And so, after we post the advertisements and receive bids, at that time, we'll have a better understanding of what the cost associated will be.
Exactly.
The funding is this coming out of 1921-2001, the Courthouse ADA Improvements Fund, and recommend approval.
I've got a motion and a second, and the only discussion is, so Commissioners, I don't know, I just think it's from here on, I think everything we should, you know, that we see as part of the capital improvement plan, a program, that we make mental note of it, and in this case, ADA has a fund, 1921, but in many cases, for example, if there could be a project within a project that would require the outside sourcing, and Michael will bring this to us in a more clear way after procurement, and that's why I pulled it, mainly to point that out. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign.
Okay, item 3F is approve execution of buyboard contract number 520-16, purchase with basic IDIQ for Bishop Building re-roofing project. The scope of this, it is for to re-roof basically the Bishop Building and install all necessary components and systems. They will be utilizing county-provided drawings and also the drawings of the architect on... They will be utilizing county-provided drawings and also the drawings of the architect on this project. And his name is Sheldon Schroeder of Freeman Schroeder Architects. And that work shall be performed per the requirements of the latest edition of the applicable local, state, and federal codes and the Nuasis County standards and specifications.
Thank you. And, and Michael, the reason I pulled this one is because in my proposal to commissioners last session, I had put $99,000 as a suggested amount from the CO budget, the soon-to-be CO budget, current tax note budget, and wanted to make that awareness to Commissioner Gonzalez, who I believe, it's all just a guesstimate, but I think it's around $160,000. And so my, my announcement to you commissioners is that I would like to have your, have you weigh in because $100,000, $99,000 was the suggested amount from our borrowing that would be attributed to it. The rest of the funds would be earmarked from old CO monies coming from Commissioner Gonzalez. So sixty, sixty-one? $65,000 from old COs that, that need to be allocated from Commissioner Gonzalez. And then I had originally from last court placed $99,000. And I think kind of Commissioner Chesney, you kind of said, "Let's take this as we, you know, let's take the projects as we see them." This is kind of the first one that comes up. And so my, my query to you all is, of course, I think we should approve the buyboard, but I also think there should be acknowledgement of the funding source. And it's my proposal that $99,000 be allocated from this CO budget.
In addition, I would like to mention, this is one of the first GOC contracts that the county has ever done. And what this is going to do for us is provide oversight of this project independent of, Juan will of course oversee from, from Public Works, but from a day-to-day operations standpoint, when we contract with basic IDIQ, they provide that contract oversight on a day-to-day basis with this project as it goes from start to finish.
And they give reports, too?
Yes.
Judge, is that meaning $99,000 from the tax notes?
Correct.
$65,000 from-
Yes, sir. But I wanted it to be presented on the record.
No, and I was going to suggest that any of these projects going forward like this be put on the regular agenda and not on the consent because-
Agreed.
I appreciate you pulling this off because I did not, and I read it all, but I did not catch that.
Well, yeah, it came, no, it, it, it was, I, I've decided to bring that up as I-
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I just didn't see that, that was a, yeah, because I think anything that we- No, no. And I appreciate y'all doing it. I'm saying thank you. I'm just saying in future, if anything, it's a tax note project should be on the regular agenda.
I think I'll work with Tyner on that. I caught it, I caught it-
Thank you for catching.
Late just as a, as a buyboard. But anyway-
I have a question.
Yes.
Excuse me, Judge.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was just noticing that y'all excluded asbestos or lead abatement. Is there a reason? Because these buildings are so old.
I would have to defer to Juan if he's-
Juan, would you mind coming to answer, please?
And he, I mean, is there a contingency somewhere, some money that we can use if you come in there and find that? Because we, you know, we had that problem in Hillcrest. I mean, Hilltop.
Yes, ma'am. We're looking to add. I know that we've done some preliminary, but we'll, we'll look into that and see what we can, if there is any asbestos or anything that comes out.
Because that would be a cost.
Yes, ma'am. It would be a cost. But based, as of right now, there's no, none that we know of.
Okay, but if we do have more in the future, I mean, it's going to add to this cost. Where is that money coming from?
Probably my budget.
Okay, well, you must have a big budget down there.
Well, these were old COs, I think. Yeah, these were old COs that really need to be utilized. So I kind of like this concept because it hits two things at once. But I do want you to know that it was, it was in my original proposal.
Thank you.
So let's get an approval. But Loud, I'd like a little direction in the way, do you understand what I'm trying to do? I'm trying to make sure we have it on the record, that we have the funding source correct. The way it's listed here is approve the buyboard. We can do it, we can do it later, but I want to make sure that the commissioners understand the funding source and that when they approve this, they're approving the $100,000, the $99,000 allocation from, as partial payment, the other coming from $65,000. Is that, is that okay to do?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, you, you can-
Does that make sense?
Say that again.
So when you're approving this, you're approving it subject to the funding source, and I'm identifying the funding source for you as $65,000 from Commissioner Gonzalez's old CO dollars allocated to his precinct in previous years.
That can be the motion, subject to payment.
Subject to, and then $99,000 out of the, out of the tax note. Okay, that's the motion. For the clerk, you, you're with us. Sorry for the convoluted. And then I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed, same sign. Okay.
I've got one more question for-
For Mr. Robinson?
So basically, we'll be actually doing the day-in, day-out on the management.
It's like, it's like a, it's like a one-stop shop. They're going to do complete, total project management.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that this is-
This is different than what we've ever done in the past, and it's going to allow us to have a little more bandwidth than we've had in the past because we have, if Juan had to manage every one of these little projects, it would be very difficult to take on all of them. And this just gives an additional resource to the county. And these are things that each of the commissioners, if you have projects in your area, that you can take advantage of as well. And I'd be happy to speak with y'all offline.
I met with them, and they, they seem like-
We worked really hard all summer trying to put this all together, make sure we had all our i's dotted and t's crossed and-
It's a good program. I think it's going to work.
And Michael, I'm going to ask that we keep an electronic folder, I love hard copies, but electronic folder at least, on any item that is identified as a capital improvement program. So this would qualify for one. So that way, when we look back in 2020, we can say, "We identified in 2019 the following projects." And in 2020, this is a complete file of all of the projects that we did. This is quite exciting. It's the very first one.
Yes, will do.
Okay. All right. I pulled the next one, which was aye, and I don't know if this is you and Lance, but if you don't mind staying up here because it is a contract.
Yeah, I'll, I can introduce the item. It's, it's approve the DIR contract number DIRTSO 4167, purchase with Insight Public Sector for courthouse Wi-Fi equipment and cloud management.
Okay, so I pulled this one because-
This is-
I'm really going to smile here. See if the camera catches this so they know how happy I am. We are going to get Wi-Fi in this entire courthouse. So all of you listening in the tower, that means you too, court managers, court coordinators, court reporters. Obviously, those of us that are employees, we have a system that we work on. But there is so much that we also are lacking, and this is going to get us really current. And I'm really excited about this, particularly upstairs in our law library for lawyers to be able to utilize. When people come into my office and make presentations, we have to give them a hotspot because there is no Wi-Fi. So I, I don't want to get overly joyous because I want to see it. But I think that we're not having a holiday, but we're going to have a, be here and celebrate Wi-Fi Day. It'll be Wi-Fi Day in the courthouse in December. Lance promises it's December. So it's, it's early Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, everything for everybody. Wi-Fi is your treat for the New Year. So I'm really, really happy about this. No, no real holiday, but it's going to be a new day. And I think you're going to see the public react to this very positively. So thank you for allowing me to pontificate there on that. Okay, next one belongs to Commissioner Vaughn. It's letter Q.
You have to vote on it, Judge?
Oh, I'm so sorry. We sure do. All those, I'm sorry, need a motion to ratify.
Oh, moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, same sign. Q, Commissioner Vaughn, is the lease agreement.
Okay, is anybody from the airport here?
Michael, go ahead and stay up if you don't mind so you can answer her questions.
Chairman is here.
And Sam's here.
Sam? Okay, come on up, Sam.
Both of y'all.
Chairman's here.
And I'm sorry to harp on this. I just think the prices are too low out there. So my question to you, these are, I think, 13 at 180 bucks. That's what, $5,200, $5,500? It's not much. Does it pay for the electricity? Are all of these the same square footage? And have y'all checked to try and get prices higher?
Well, they've been reevaluated, and these were the numbers, I guess, in cooperation with the county that were set. They'll be reevaluated, of course, every year.
But, I mean, what, what was the price before 180? During, 180 is the lease agreement for these hangars. What was the price before?
I don't have that with me.
Okay, because this just seems low to rent a hangar.
Well, it depends on the, the size of hangar, the age.
I mean, we don't know how, they're all, obviously, you're giving all of them 180. So are these all the same size?
Where's our airport director? I mean, we, is he around? Can we get him? Like, maybe we could push this back until we get him.
Yeah, I would like to do that because I just think this is for a year lease, has 13 leases. And I'm not being ugly here, but I mean, my gosh, that's cheap.
Judge, could we table this to later in the-
We're happy to ta, happy to table. And then I'm going to ask court manager to send a note to John and ask Sam to go outside and call him, too. Of course, Michael, come on in.
Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but as I read this item, it says, "We're accepting for record purposes executed agreements." Or sort of these-
In other words, we've already done them.
These are already executed agreements. This is just a-
Well, but it's still an agenda item that she can get her questions answered on.
Sure, sure.
Right, right. I think that's the point. And, and let me also make a comment here. We're in discussion. I need a motion to table to this afternoon, or, you know, a little, I don't want to say this afternoon, Tyner.
Somewhere later in the meeting until the airport director gets here. Second?
In an hour, let's say. I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed, same sign. Let me make a quick comment here. I have spoken to, I believe, Michael about this and also John, Director of the Airport, about the, the real need to get a consultant to really, as we talked about, to address the needs of the airport. You're never going to get the question answered correctly unless you do the type of analysis that's required. And we, I know have, he has been interviewing people. They've, they've been coming in, so he's got a good feel for it. Michael, I, I don't know why, but I feel like in an upcoming court, as in a very, like, within the next two courts, we're going to see an agenda item that's going to really address this issue. Also, the issue, Commissioner Gonzalez, of the, the, the need for the 5,000-foot runway, which will help our ability to, to proceed with Tech Dot Aviation Grants and IRT Innovative Readiness Training Grants. And so I, this is coming, but I agree with you. It'd be nice to hear from John that he's working on that and that this will be coming up in an agenda item. Michael, am I speaking out of turn when I say two courts at least? I mean, no longer than two courts sessions. So maybe early November. Okay. I hope that helps, but let's get John here. All right. The next one, Ms. Commissioner Vaughn, is, I believe, S.
And I think we can do S and T together. My concern was on page 10 that we are telling the licensee basically that he has to provide the equipment and uniform for players. What I'd like to do, because I don't think we should be dictating to them that they have to do that. If a parent were to see that, they would say, "Well, you've got to buy those uniforms and the equipment." So I would just like to maybe, that the county put in there, if you don't already have it, Laura, that the county is not responsible that they have to do it.
We've made the change, and basically for Article 25, we're saying that the licenser, who is the county, right, will not be responsible for furnishing the equipment and uniforms for players. And then the licensee for any event that requires some kind of licensee, they will be responsible for that. And that's the change that's going to be made, both to this agreement and the other one.
Okay, and so we're going to mark that number one out, the equipment?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's going to say that, but it's going to say that we are not responsible.
But I don't want them, the parents, if a parent were to, I, someone called me about this. If a parent were to see this, they would think that this league was responsible to get their children their equipment and their uniforms.
That's silent. We're just saying we're not responsible. That's between them.
But it says, "In addition, licensee in connection with each event-"
I changed it.
You changed it? Okay.
I changed that paragraph.
That's where you changed it. Just making sure. I want them not to have to be responsible.
That's a good catch.
Thank you.
What about the next one?
Same thing, so we can do them both on-
Okay, I'm going to look for the motion.
Okay, motion to approve S and T.
And a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Thank you, Laura.
Okay, let's proceed into the regular agenda.
Judge, it's been brought to my attention that there's something on special motions list that needs to be deleted, correct, Elva?
Yes, number seven needs to be deleted off of the special motions list. It is for Document Logistics.
So that's going to be 3C, and then in the special motions list itself, it's going to be item seven.
So we need to go back to 3C?
Please.
Judge, I'd, motion to reopen 3C.
I need to, okay, I've got a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, same sign.
And if you'll look at your courtroom monitor, it's line seven, Document Logistics LLC. If that could be deleted from the special motions list.
I've got a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Is it an error? Are you going to bring it back to us? What's, why are we making the correction?
The correction was that it was, yes, it is going to be brought back. Services were not performed, but they were invoiced.
Okay, thank you for the catch, and we will rely on you to make that correction, deletion, and bring it back to court at the appropriate time. Okay, now, appreciate that, Tyner.
And Judge, John Cox will be here in one hour.
Then I guessed right. And at that time, I will call upon Mr. Paul Choppa. He is here with Leinbarger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson LLP on a presentation of court fine and fees, and also giving us probably an update on delinquent tax collections. And we-
Always bringing good news.
Looks like we have a, a report in front of us.
Judge, good morning.
Good morning.
Hopefully, we can put a smile on your face again this-
Well, let me tell you, it's hard to beat Wi-Fi, but money will do it, so let's see.
Well, we have a good report here. Marvin is passing that around. Again, thank you for the opportunity to come before you. We've got a report that's in front of you, and that covers delinquent tax and fees and fines collection. And we'll get into that in just a second. We also have a PowerPoint presentation that'll be up on the screen, and we'll identify the slides that are in your report as we go through those. But let me introduce the members of the team who are with me this morning. These are some of the key players in our law firm who help us collect delinquent taxes and court fees and fines for Nuasis County. And we have Elva Galvane is a partner with our firm, and you'll hear from her in just a second on delinquent tax collection. Elva's been with us almost 20 years and is in court on a regular basis litigating the collection cases on your behalf. Also is Robert Cuevas is our office manager, and Robert's been with the law firm over 30 years and helps work with our staff of 34 people, doing a great job of managing our day-to-day operation. Marvin Leary is in the back over there. Marvin been with the firm like I have 28 years. We started same year together. Marvin is our resale manager here on a regular basis, helping to sell properties that have been foreclosed on for delinquent taxes that are owed. And Martha Landine is an area manager, also with more than 30 years of experience. Martha works very closely with Elva in moving all the litigation for the county. One other member who couldn't be with us today, who's a key part of this report, is Gracie Torres, who has also been with us more than 30 years. She works very closely with your JPs and their staff in the fees and fines collection effort. So let me get into it. Again, thank you for the opportunity to come before you, and thank you for the opportunity to serve Nuasis County. If we could turn to the, let's see, I guess Tyner's going to let us do this. One more slide. Okay, here we go. Let's start off here, and then I'm, I'm going to summarize this chart for the Commissioners Court, and then I'll turn it over to Elva to talk about our litigation efforts and how we get to this point. We thought it would be very informative and interesting to present one year's tax levy to the Commissioners Court and show you how that levy has been reduced over the past two collection year cycle. And here, we're focusing on the 2016 tax year. You can see in that year, Nuasis County levied $117 million. And in the county group, there's a notation down at the bottom that includes the county, the Farm-to-Market Fund, and the Hospital District Fund as well. And you can see in that year, $117 million, 2016 taxes was levied. The tax office, Kevin Kishnik and his staff, collected almost 98% of that on a current basis, and a little more than 2% or 3 million was turned over to our law firm for collection on July 1 of the following year. And as we've talked about before, taxes are assessed in a given year. Tax bills go out in October. Any taxes that remain unpaid the following February go delinquent. They incur penalty and interest on a monthly basis for the county. And five months later, after that February 1 delinquency date, any balance that's still due gets turned over to our law firm for collection. At that point, an additional fee of 20% is added to the taxpayer bill. And so in this way, if and when we collect those accounts, our fee comes directly from the delinquent tax person. None of it comes out of the county budget, so our service is cost-free to Nuasis County. So our service is cost-free to New Oasis County and all the entities that you collect for. So continuing on with that 2016 levy, you can see, following that balance, two years later, the three million that was turned over to us for collection had been worked down to seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars as of June thirtieth of 2019, representing less than one percent of the original tax levy that's still outstanding for just that one year. If you'll look as we go through the report, and Elva's going to cover some of those highlights, you'll see that over the past couple of years, we've been very, very successful in collecting delinquent tax revenue for New Oasis County. And let me have Elva tell you a little bit more about our procedures as we go through that process, and then I'll come back and talk about court fees and fines.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Morning.
I'm Elva Galvane, and as Paul mentioned, I actually handle the litigation and the post-judgment tax sales for the county. I'm going to start off with our work plan, which is under Exhibit A. And we meet annually with the tax assessor collector, and we create a work plan. During this work plan, we are going to mail out eight delinquent mailings on all delinquent accounts. We target accounts with base levy of over seven hundred and fifty dollars. We will file fifteen hundred lawsuits and seventy-five tax warrants on business personal property accounts. In addition to filing lawsuits, we also have collectors who make phone calls and who also actually go out to businesses and to homes and make personal visits. We do continue to prosecute our existing lawsuits until they either pay or we take a judgment. And we do work with the tax office to get taxpayers into either payment agreements or make partial payments if they cannot pay in full. Currently, we are monitoring over two thousand payment agreements, which represent one point seven million dollars in delinquent taxes, penalties, and interest owed to the county. And from January two thousand seventeen through December two thousand eighteen, we mailed over ninety-four thousand delinquent tax statements to owners of delinquent property in New Oasis County. Basically, before we take any further action, like filing a lawsuit or a tax warrant, all delinquent taxpayers in the county receive one to three mailings before we actually take further action. From January two thousand seventeen through December two thousand eighteen, we filed nine hundred and eighty-four lawsuits against one thousand five hundred thirty-nine parcels of property, seeking more than two point one million dollars in delinquent taxes, penalties, and interest. Once a lawsuit is paid, oftentimes taxpayers will pay the account in full, and we dismiss the account. For, in the past two years, we have dismissed over six hundred and fifty lawsuits against eight hundred and eighty-nine parcels of property within the county after taxpayers paid more than one point one million dollars in delinquent taxes, penalties, and interest. During this past reporting period, we pursued judgments in two hundred and ninety-one cases against three hundred and eighty parcels, involving a total of more than four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in delinquent taxes, penalties, and interest. We also released as paid in full, three hundred and thirty-one judgments resulting in the collection of more than five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in delinquent taxes, penalties, and interest owed to the county. On January two thousand seventeen through December two thousand and eighteen, we posted two hundred and ninety-nine properties for tax sale, collecting over three million dollars in delinquent penalties, taxes, and interest owed to the county. We also, during the past two years, executed thirty-four tax warrants, collecting more than nine hundred and forty-six thousand dollars that were owed in business personal property accounts. Once we put a property up for tax sale, if it does not sell on the courthouse steps, it is struck off to the taxing jurisdictions and held in trust by the county. And we do accept written bids, which come to you on a monthly basis to approve in case that bid is less than what is owed against the property. So from January two thousand and seven through December two thousand and eighteen, we sold seventy-eight properties at tax resale, collecting over three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in delinquent taxes, penalties, and interest, and returning one point six million dollars of taxable value to the tax roll. In addition to written bids, once properties are struck off, we also have a annual tax resale in the summer. And over the past ten years, we have sold one thousand one hundred sixty-three properties, collecting more than four point seven million dollars in delinquent taxes, penalties, and interest, and returning more than thirteen million dollars in property value to the tax roll. Sometimes when we file a lawsuit, people will seek protection in bankruptcy court, which means that we have to halt our collections in the district court and then file our claims in bankruptcy court. So as of July two thousand nineteen, we have collected in bankruptcy court four point two million dollars owed to all entities within New Oasis County. This chart actually shows the larger bankruptcies that only, these are the amounts owed to the county group only. So from December two thousand seventeen through December two thousand and eighteen, we collected specifically for the New Oasis County group one point eight million dollars in bankruptcies filed by the listed debtors. On page eleven, twelve, and thirteen, we have collections over the past three years. The first chart is collections for the past three years by tax year. From July two thousand sixteen through June two thousand nineteen, we collected more than eighteen point five million dollars in delinquent taxes, penalties, and interest. The next chart is by fiscal year. From October two thousand fifteen through September two thousand eighteen, we collected over sixteen point million dollars in delinquent taxes, penalties, and interest. And then the next chart is, it's by calendar year. So from January two thousand and sixteen through December two thousand and eighteen, we collected over sixteen point three million dollars in delinquent taxes, penalties, and interest. The next chart is a pie graph that breaks out the delinquent tax roll by year and amount owed. So as of July twenty nineteen, over sixty percent of your delinquent taxes are delinquent three years or less, which means that these are very collectible accounts, and we do anticipate to collect the majority of these accounts. The next chart is your delinquent tax roll broken out by account status. So as of September two thousand and nineteen, twenty-two percent of your delinquent tax roll is in a lawsuit. Fourteen percent are in deferrals. Four percent are in bankruptcies. Twelve percent are in judgments. And forty-eight percent are the newer accounts, which are currently receiving delinquent mailings, phone calls, or personal visits prior to us filing a lawsuit. That concludes our numbers regarding the delinquent property collections over the past three years. At this time, I'd just like to thank the Commissioners for allowing us to serve New Oasis County and giving us the time today to present this collection report. And we do pledge to continue to work hard on your behalf. And if you have any questions, we'll take them now or subsequent to the meeting. Our doors are always open if you have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Well, clearly, we are getting a terrific return on our investment in hiring the Linebarger firm. I am just curious, do you think that communication and technology has aided you? And are you constantly kind of seeking out new technologies so that you can continue this upward trend? Because it's very, it's very telling. I mean, it's a clear trend, right? It's not an anomaly. You are clearly doing better and better, and this is exciting. I know you cannot predict, but if you knew what was causing it, you could make the prediction, for example, in this next fiscal year, that that trend would continue to go up.
Well, actually, what we're seeing for other counties is the online tax resale and tax sales. That allows a larger?
Bitter.
Bitter field for us, rather than just having something on the courthouse steps. If you use the technology that the legislature has now allowed you to?
Utilize.
Utilize, that you will have a larger bidding pool, and it can actually go national instead of just local, since it will be online. So I think that's something to look forward in the future.
Correct.
We're working on that already, right?
I was going to say, funny you should say that.
Yes. We are hoping to implement that, should the Commissioners in the future approve it, yes.
Right.
Thanks for the county attorney. Appreciate it.
So, does this conclude your?
Yes.
Your presentation? Okay. Paul, do you want to come back up and?
Thank you, Judge. Let me just add to what Elvis said on the technology side. We have over three hundred people in our IT department in San Antonio, and anybody who's worked with IT professionals know how expensive those folks are. Very high salaries, very hard workers. They do the bulk of the actual work in not only making sure that we send out notices that are accurate, but also tracking down and finding a lot of people who move on a regular basis. And that's really critical when we talk about court fees and fines in a little while. These are tickets people issue. They move around all over. It's really hard to track them down. And that's where we distinguish ourselves, in skip tracing, finding these individuals, getting their attention, so they come forward and take care of their obligations. Following up on the online court auctions, we hope to bring that item back to the Commissioners Court at the meeting at the end of the month. I think it should be on the agenda.
It's October thirtieth.
October thirtieth. We visited with Tiner, and I believe Lourdes and Belinda have already blessed the proposed order, so we'll bring that at the end of the month.
Boy, that's really exciting. You know, our goal here is to build, you know, our reserves and our funds, and this is a prime example of, you know, revenue building for our county and part of the modernization that this court collectively, you know, wishes. So, very excited. So this really is sort of the end of the tax piece, and you would like to go on to the next piece?
Absolutely, Judge. Unless there are further questions, let me?
Well, let me ask. Let me ask. Anybody? Commissioner Modis has a question.
Paul, thanks. I mean, this is a great presentation. Really breaks it down for us. I want to refer to the slide before the one that's on the screen right now.
Go back one slide. Thank you.
There we go.
The breakdown by year?
Breakdown by year. So you or Elva had mentioned, I guess, within the three years, y'all are recouping the money better or faster. So it seems like if it lasts longer, then it may be more difficult to track. Is that about right, or is that how it works?
Generally, the older the debt is, the harder it is to collect, and we'll talk about that on the court fees and fine side in a little while. On the delinquent tax side, it's not as tough, because you have essentially the collateral, the property, that you can foreclose on. Occasionally, there are some tax dollars that may slip through your hand on the business personal property side. Businesses open and close very quickly sometimes, even before they're turned over for collection. We go out and try to get their attention, get them to pay their bill, or seize their assets if they haven't paid, and they've already shut the doors and moved on. But on the real property side, the real estate, you've got that real estate as security. So even if the debt is several years old, you can eventually foreclose on that property if they don't pay. So a lot more secure on that side. But thank you, Commissioner, for that question, and I think that's a good segue into, let's talk about court fees and fines. These dollars are a little tougher to collect, but I do want to point out that, in keeping with what the judge brought up about innovation, we were one of the first firms that innovated in expanding into this area of collection work. We have competitors out there who kind of follow us, is what we tell people across the business. Court fees and fines, we got into years ago to try to help counties at no additional cost. Again, there's a pass-through fee for collecting these accounts, and the success has been generally very good. It could be better. Let me turn to the, thank you, Maggie. Here's the first slide, and this is a summary of collections for the county courts at law. And we've worked with your county clerk to try to bring these accounts. At the county court at law level, all these cases have been adjudicated, so there's already a judgment in place. After they go delinquent, they get turned over to us. And over this past reporting period, over the life of the contract, we've collected more than two point two million in delinquent court fees and fines for the county courts at law. We have also helped resolve, helped the county clerk's office resolve more than five point eight million in outstanding cases that were owed to the county courts at law. Now, this is over a long period of time, from February two thousand four, you can see there through the end of twenty eighteen. But there were several periods where there was no activity taking place. There were a couple of conversions, computer conversions that took place at the county clerk's office. There was a process of getting buy-in from some of the judges who were out there. I think we've got past all of that. We're at the point where we can fully ramp up and start sending collection letters and making phone calls on a regular basis to all these accounts owed to the county courts at law. And just some of the highlights or some of the numbers there, over the past period, we've sent out over fifty thousand letters. We've talked to seven thousand inbound calls and more than seventy-three thousand outbound calls, trying to track and locate your defendants who owe debts to the county and bring them in. Let me turn to the next slide, and now we can follow up with what Commissioner Modis was talking about. The older the cases are, the harder they are to collect, especially on the court fees and fine side, where there's no collateral, nothing securing the debt. And I want to point out at the bottom of the chart, and we'll turn this, we'll look at the next colored chart and make it a little easier to understand. But those numbers show the age of the cases turned over to us for collection, by offense age and by placement age. And almost ninety, more than ninety-nine percent of the cases turned over to us for collection are greater than three years old. We're working with your county clerk to try to improve that. But let me turn that, just to highlight that number again. If you look at those charts there, you can see that that red figure in the pie charts is the age of the cases that get turned over to us for collection. Over three years old, everything in red, almost more than ninety-nine percent. And one of those charts shows it by offense age, and the other one is by placement, but almost identical. If you go to the next slide, Maggie, thank you. This is a survey by PricewaterhouseCoopers, one of the big ones in the industry. And they essentially show that the older a debt is, what Commissioner was alluding to earlier, the harder it is to collect. You can see anything from six months to a year old, higher collection rates, seven point eight on average, fourteen percent is the median. And actually, our firm statewide, working through this, we're closer to twenty percent range when we can get the debt within the first year. And you can see, if older than a year, up to six to eight years, you're talking very low, single-digit collection rates, the older the debt is. Let's go to the next slide, and this is, let's contrast with the New Oasis County Justice of the Peace Courts. And you can see that total collections for all the courts combined there, more than two point seven million dollars. Twenty-eight percent recovery rate for the JP courts. And again, the total resolution rate, five point six million. This includes cases that have been dismissed, because they've satisfied the requirements of the JP, community service, time served, maybe defensive driving courses, those kind of things. The five point six million represents cases fully resolved. The two point seven million is dollars that actually came in and were paid. So very good numbers there. If you'll turn to the next slide, Maggie, you can see, here's a breakdown again by offense age. And you can see that seventy-seven percent, under the plus-three-year category, are cases that are three years or older, contrast to the ninety-nine percent at the county court law. And placement age is a lot better as well. If you'll turn to the next page, Maggie, here's a summary by month for the JP courts, and you can see they've been very active. We've covered twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, and you can see on a monthly basis the number of letters that we're sending out, the number of skip tracing activities that we're doing, and we're updating address and phone information when we find those ticket holders, the phone activity that's taking place, and the dollars collected by month for all your JP courts. And you can see that it's very, very active, robust program going on. There were only a couple of JPs that were not participating. I think they're set to get on board this month sometime. There are meetings that have already taken place. They're ready to go, but there's some of the smaller JP courts. So everyone else is participating. We're working very closely with the JPs and their staff to continue to boost the numbers. The next slide is just breaking it down, what I mentioned earlier, by age. You can see the really old cases is not as significant an issue. Seventy-seven percent of old cases, and we define those as those greater than three years old, are what are being turned over to us for collection. And then finally, the next slide is, thank you, is a summary by covering both the county courts at law and the JP courts. And you can see here are the total dollars, what was assigned over the life of this contract from the county courts at law. Eleven point seven million in total delinquency that was turned over. And I may have skipped this, but delinquent means sixty days past due. So at sixty days past due, county courts at law, your JP courts can turn those debts over to us for collection. An additional thirty percent penalty is added to those fees that gets paid to us if and when we actually collect. If a case gets dismissed, we do not collect a fee, but we obviously help the county resolve that. We brought those defendants in. So those are the total figures there assigned.
Paul, forgive me. So why is the resolution rate so high there, when I only see one point five collected out of the assigned, eleven point seven?
The resolution rate is including everything, both the canceled cases where they were pulled from us, they were canceled because they got resolved either through, as I mentioned earlier, community service, some kind of deferred dis?
Cancelled plus collected over assigned gives me my resolution rate.
Exactly.
Got it.
Exactly. And so?
Got it.
Exactly. And so forty-three percent for the courts at law, forty-four point nine for JP, and on average forty-four percent for all your courts.
Got it.
We know how many number of cases were dismissed because you get no fees for those. Do we know that?
These are the dollar amounts under canceled, we can break it down by number of cases as well.
I would just be curious to see how many they're dismissing.
Yep. They may not all be dismissals, some of them, as I mentioned, they met the terms of whatever the court order was.
Conditions.
Conditions, yeah. Defensive driving, or maybe there was time served, but we can certainly break that down for you Commissioner, absolutely, we can follow up, we've got that information and we can follow up. So, that kind of summarizes our collection efforts on behalf of Nuance County. Again, thank you all very much for the opportunity, it's a pleasure to work with the Commissioner's Court, with your tax collector Kevin Kishnik and his staff, he's got a lot of great individuals there. With all your JPs, their staff, and with Kara Sands, your county clerk, and some of the judges, also Loura and Belinda have been very, very helpful as we go through this process. Anything we can do, as Elva mentioned, our door is always open, please give us a call at any time and we'd be happy to describe and tell you more information about what we're working on behalf of the county.
Is there anyone that Paul didn't mention nicely that he was supposed to? All right, good, we're good, thanks.
Tyner, I forgot Tyner. There we are.
So, the reality is, is that there is more than we can do. And while you've given us a really great presentation, and it seems like when it comes to tax delinquencies, we have a much higher rate of efficacy, it's very clear that even though you have a very strong presentation on, and I want to commend you, on fees and fines, it's very clear that we don't have that same efficacy in fees and fines. And there's many reasons for that, there's a lot of contributing factors. But the truth is, isn't it so that there is more than we can do? And that if possible, Leinbarger holds technology that could place, if you will, a hold on folks' ability, they would have to come and take a resolution to their fees and fines before they could, for example, get a vehicle registration license renewal. And some jurisdictions have availed themselves of that ability.
I'm glad you mentioned that Judge, and that is in the report, let's go back to it real quick, if you don't mind.
No, let's highlight that for the court, because that's something in the future that we need to consider.
I think one of the things that, for Paul's benefit, if we could only give him the delinquents after six months or within a year, at least a year, a year and a half, I mean, you would see that number go up a lot.
That would greatly improve collections as well. Commissioner, you're right, the sooner those cases get turned over for collection, the higher the collection rate-
Three years is a long time for, you know, but-
Well, they should be turned over after the sixty-first day.
That'd be ideally-
I mean, that's, that is the rule, that's the law, and that's what we should uphold.
Ideally, that's where we want to get to, but in following up with the judge mentioned, if you'll look, this is not in the PowerPoint presentation, but in your booklet that you have, behind the court fees and fines tab, it is page number three. And this is something that we're working on, is to block vehicle registrations for anyone who owes court fees and fines to Nuance County. We're working with Kevin Kishnik in his office, he can do it, he has the authority under Texas law to do it as a tax assessor collector, we're talking to him. If he decides not to, our law firm is authorized to do this and we can deal directly with the state on behalf of the county. So, that's something that we'll be developing over the next month and we'll report back to the court. We've got a meeting with Kevin and his staff to review that, but this is a very, very valuable tool. As you can see, there's a description there that describes the process for withholding the vehicle registration if their court fees and fines are not paid.
Paul, is that something that, I know it's based on law that you work out with Kevin Kishnik's office, but is it a policy or anything that we'll have to finalize or approve on our end as Commissioner?
Yes, you will have to do an agreement with the state directly, or if you work through Kevin's office, and some of the detail is listed there.
We don't have to.
But if Kevin decides for whatever reason that he doesn't want to do it, and the last time we talked, he was still kind of undecided which route he wanted to take, then you can take the private route. And what we're saying is through our firm. And what we're saying really, this is an additional step that you ought to pursue either way, whether it's through the county tax collector, by all means, we encourage that, and we've told Kevin, we're not trying to interfere with anything you do, but if you feel you don't have the staff or the time, or don't want to undertake the effort, we can do that.
And I think the issue for Kevin is the staff.
Right.
Staff concern, and, but there would be no cost to the county to employ Leinbarger to do this for us, and that is-
It would be a pass-through fee.
It would be a pass-through fee, and the innovation allows us to collect more dollars, which helps the taxpayer, and quite frankly, it's an equitable solution. And you can still go back to court and negotiate, you still have the discretion as a JP to work out, you know, a resolution at that point, but it puts a stop on you, it says, hold on, you shouldn't be able to avail yourself of this privilege when you have not taken care of fees and fines. And so, I think this is something that I wanted the Commissioners to know while you were here, and we look forward to that, to that report so that we can take action. Even though our fiscal year has already begun, mentally, there is something wonderful about first quarter twenty twenty, January one, and it's my wish that we pursue this vigorously because the money that's on the table are in the millions of dollars, and that is significant to the services that we provide all the citizens of Nuance County. So, I think it's fiscally responsible, and again, conservative means conserve, and we need to conserve our dollars. And this is a tool that's free, that's available, and doesn't burden the staff here at the county. So, I'd really, I'd like to have Commissioners weigh in, of course, and hear your thoughts, but this is, this is very important, it's what jurisdictions that are mindful of the dollar are doing.
Absolutely, we will follow up Judge, count on that. And let me finally point out one more thing that's in your packet that we didn't cover, but I think it's important to just remind the Commissioner's Court, especially the judge and Commissioner Vaughn, I think, may not have been around when we first covered this project, and that is homestead exemption audits. And if you'll turn to that tab under C in your booklet, this is a report that shows additional revenue that came in from accounts that were being shielded from improper or invalid homestead exemptions. This is another example of the innovation that our firm undertook. We signed up Nuance County as a pilot project, no one else was doing this in the state of Texas. At no charge to the county, we wanted to figure out how to do it, if the county would indulge us, and we went through the appraisal district, that who has, that's who has the authority to sign the contract. And the results were outstanding, you can see the results there, total more than two point four million in additional revenue came in to all the jurisdictions combined from these accounts that were being improperly shielded from these improper homestead exemptions, and more than five hundred million in value got returned to the tax rolls of Nuance County to be fully taxed going forward. So, this is the kind of project that you want to do every five to six, seven, eight years. We did this in twenty twelve, we'll be looking to do this again with the appraisal district if they're interested in the spring-
And that five hundred million represents over almost a million and a half dollars of revenue for Nuance County alone.
On a yearly basis.
So, on a yearly basis. So, it's, I just really applaud that effort and grateful, and that's why I say, bring us everything in the kitchen sink that you have to help us lessen the burden on taxpayers, allow us to have greater reserves for resiliency, and to do more with the dollars that we are, you know, given. So, really appreciate you.
We'll keep working hard.
Thank you.
Thank you Judge.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good day. Thank you.
Good report.
I was going to say, and that, folks, is how you do it in Commissioner's Court. That is a thorough presentation, it is backed with data, and it is efficient, and it brings good news. Thank you so much. At this time, no pressure here Chief, as I just said, that was a good presentation, I know yours will be as well, but please welcome Annaville Fire Chief Michael Klack, who's going to give us a presentation, or at least some thoughts on our, on a fire marshal. This would be a Nuance County fire marshal.
Thank you Judge, thanks Commissioner.
Thank you.
I am here just to express the need for a county fire marshal. The primary purpose of a county fire marshal, or any fire marshal anywhere, is to provide safety for the citizens, primarily when they're visiting commercial structures. That way, there's some type of regulation, there's a fire code that's enforced, and annual inspections follow to make these establishments safer for the community. And that is the purpose we're looking at here. And the reason we're, I also represent the Nuance County Fire Chiefs Association, and the reason we're looking at doing this as a county-wide establishment is, that way we have an overall fire code for the entire county. Nuance County is only one of nine counties that can establish their own fire code, because you have to have a population of two hundred and fifty thousand or more, or be adjacent to a county. Jim, I'm sorry, Sandpat has a county fire marshal because Nuance County has more than two hundred and fifty thousand people. So, having that will allow us to adopt a fire code which will make our community safer for the citizens of Nuance County. It will also help regulate things that are being built out in the unincorporated areas to make sure that they're meeting standards for the future and for the safety of citizens.
Thank you. One of the things, this is for presentation only Commissioners, but I do encourage you to ask questions, there'll be no action at this time, but one of the things I was hoping that you could do for us is so that we could properly, you know, talk about this in the county judge's office, is bring me an organizational chart or structure as you see how it would, how it would look. If you had the ideal, you know, fire marshal, what does that look like in other counties that are similarly situated? Just because for the folks up here to my left and right, I think we would want to know what that implies, for example, staffing, right? And an office, and I know it would be just a guess at this point, we would work together in creating it, but it would be helpful to have some sort of a conceptual plan in writing, for me, it would.
Judge, can I?
Absolutely.
Question. I think this is a great discussion to have. I appreciate you bringing it forward, and I am the last guy that wants to spend money on anything that we don't need to spend money on, but this is very important. I'm very interested in having this discussion, I'm very interested in getting your specific proposal on how it would work, but I'm also very interested in looking at, if the possibility exists, to incorporate the fire marshal that the city of Corpus Christi has. Is there a way to contract with them? Is that an option that we have the ability to do? May not work, may not be the right thing for us, but they have an infrastructure in place with a fire marshal, and I think there's several of them over there. So, I'd like for that to at least be part of the discussion, and I don't know if you can answer that today, or if you want to wait, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I think this is something that we definitely need to have some serious, serious conversations about.
Perhaps, from the quoted manager's perspective, we could have maybe a workshop on this where we could, you know, have these types of discussions. I can tell you statutorily, that's going to create a problem to have city-county working together, it has the same exact problems that we're trying to unravel with the city-county health department, just from a, the city does not have authority in the unincorporated areas, and that is going to be the big challenge. I'm going to say something that I think is premature, because we haven't made any decisions to have one, but I do want the Commissioners to be aware of, the public hearing that was held by the general land office just a few weeks ago here in Nuance County indicated that the four billion dollars worth of HUD, CDBG dollars are a, that one of, there's many proper uses, but one proper use is a fire station, a fire, you know, office. Interestingly enough, government buildings are not, but fire and police are. The rules are very particular. And in addition, there is an incredible granting opportunity that grants, and my office are looking at, in particular, to help fund this type of endeavor if we were to pursue it. So, perhaps a workshop is a very good idea to address the legal, the legality, the HR, the organizational structure, and most importantly, the funding source.
But Laura, I wasn't aware of any legal, are there legal issues that prohibit? Because that would obviously take it off the table, but what legal issues prohibit that from happening that I-
It's not prohibited, but the ESDs, because they do exist and they were created, they have the authority to do that too.
No, I understand that, but I mean, there's nothing that prohibits legally that I was aware of. If we wanted to contract with the city, the judge just made some reference to some-
Well, you could interlocal anything you want to, but that's not their jurisdiction, and there's a reason for there not being their jurisdiction. In fact, let me just suggest that-
Trouble in going out already.
Yeah, that in a recent situation, when you're in the unincorporated areas and you are building something that's industrial, the city does not have any background at all to deal with this type of permitting. They don't have the expertise, they don't have the experience, and so, in the unincorporated arenas, we would be contracting with somebody who doesn't have the expertise, I think. Chief, do you want to address that?
I can, I don't want to speak on behalf of Chief Page, the fire marshal for the city, but I think he's overwhelmed as it is. I don't know that he can take on any more responsibility, just trying to keep up what we've got. My vision of this originally would be a fire marshal that would fall under the emergency management office. That way, they could assist the emergency manager during times of disaster, and that would be a good location to plant that department and to be an assistant to the emergency manager. But also, they can represent and be the liaison between all the ESDs and the fire departments with the emergency management during times of disaster.
That was my envision too, because you already have some great office, fire stations out there, so that person could office out of your fire station, correct?
We-
Oh, you've got room?
We can, we can make whatever needs to happen, happen. We personally, as Annaville and ESD number one, are willing to provide all the software, we already own it, there's no reason for the county to have to buy that, so they can do all their inspections and documentation through that software, so they don't have to buy it. We have inspectors that will also provide to the office to assist.
Who is the fire marshal, like someone referenced Sandpat County, who's the fire marshal in Sandpat County?
The fire marshal in Sandpat County, you're going to make me-
And I'm sorry, not his name, is, how are they structured, my Pat?
They're structured under the sheriff's department, it's a detective under the sheriff's department.
So, they have a detective under the sheriff's department as the fire marshal?
Yes, sir.
So, we need to look at other counties and see what they do.
Everybody does it differently.
Yeah.
And all I was saying was-
County has their own complete fire marshal's office. Clayburg County, before the fire marshal moved away, was underneath the Commissioner's Court directly.
Yeah, I was just looking for, to include every part of the discussion, I mean, just because the fire marshal's overloaded in Corpus Christi doesn't mean we shouldn't have a, or legisla, I'm just, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, I'm just saying, I just want to look at all options, and, because I think this is something we need to do, I just don't know the best way to do it yet. And so, as the judge indicated, coming in with a good, specific proposal after looking at everything, and just know that that's, when you come back with your proposal, those are just questions I'm going to ask, is, okay, why wouldn't the city work? Or, you know, I'm not advocating that the city does it better than we do, you may, that's not what I'm saying, I'm just, I want to say, I'm the same question, how does Sandpat do it, how does Clayburg do it, how does city of Corpus Christi, why couldn't we combine? How does Harris County do it? I want to know all those things, I don't want to reinvent the wheel. If there's a county that's doing it real well somewhere, then we should at least look at their model, that's all I'm saying, I don't have a-
More than happy to lead that for y'all and go out to other counties-
Appreciate that.
Get those-
We do.
Feedbacks and recommendations on how that should be established.
Thank you, and of course, as you-
County Fire Marshal's Office did a presentation at the two thousand eighteen Emergency Managers' Conference on the specific subject, because it was so important that counties need to have a fire marshal.
And although she's not here, we have discussed this, of course, emergency management is directly under my office, the county judge, and we have discussed it with our emergency management deputy director, and as we await our director's return, they also are in favor and believe that this would be in the best interest of Nuance County.
Judge, I think, I would hope, because this is the second time we brought this up, and I wanted it back on here, because I think we need to get moving on it, especially because of those crude storage tanks out on Calco at Cal Island. We don't know what else is going to come in here, and so, to find out and be able to regulate some of the things that are going on would be helpful. So, I think your idea of a workshop would be great, and I'd like a timeline on it, so we can get moving and not just put it to the back burner.
And do we have to by statute have a fire marshal? Is that just-
It's discretionary.
It is discretionary, okay. And just asking, because I mean, if we're doing, if it's have to, then obviously, and let me just, what would prohibit us, or what would stop us from just saying, and I'm not saying we're doing that, but that you be the fire marshal? I mean, what do we?
That would be an interlocal that you would have to look at.
Well, the ESDs have that authority to create and establish one themselves.
They can create their, so then-
We do, that's correct, but that's still going to prevent us from having a county-wide fire code that would make everything-
Right, consistency, right, consistency.
That's what I'm trying to bring to y'all, is a consistency across the county.
So, you could create one in your ESD only, but we're looking at this just saying, let's don't do it just in your ESD, let's do it county-wide. saying, let's don't do it just in your ESD, let's do it countywide.
We're looking at this countywide. I mean, right now I've received numerous phone calls from the emergency manager about, uh, some, um, development that might happen out off of Chapman Ranch Road. Well, I have no authority out there, so I cannot even review those, um, plans because I do not have the authority to review that plan because not within my district.
And I certainly don't want to step.
Establish a countywide.
My bad. I certainly don't want to step on Chief Scott's codey, or Chief Scott's toes either. I know y'all work together real well, so.
And, and right now, uh, from the New Oasis County Fire Chiefs where it's a unanimous vote that we all support this idea as a countywide.
And, and I have been there at that meeting and, and I heard that as well. Commissioner Matus has a question, chief.
Thank you, Judge. Um, so chief, how does this impact? You know, I represent the most amount of small communities in the county, right? They fall in precinct three. Talk Banchetti, talk Agua Dulce, talk Driscoll. Of course, Robstown, they're, they're able to handle theirs, you know, they have that set up already arranged as a, as a larger city. So we're talking unincorporated, but this, would this also include small towns that really don't necessarily have that responsibility kind of farmed out to a particular staff member?
So yes, sir. There is a clause in the, um, uh, code 352, the, um, government code that says that the county can sign interlocal agreements with the smaller municipalities if they, uh, want to provide that service to those municipalities. And I believe y'all did the same thing with the emergency manager now.
Right. So fall under that. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, uh, for, for the chief? I think you've kind of heard the, the well, Tyner of, of the commissioners and that is that, uh, this is an important issue and it's one that needs to be addressed within the next, uh, few weeks so that we can maybe, um, you know, see how we can advance the discussion and the structure of what a, what the possibilities and options are for a countywide fire marshal. And again, I, I also want to emphasize that during the workshop, we'll make sure emergency management is here, maybe have other representatives of the chiefs. I know you represent the chiefs association, but it might be nice to have other voices here to, to share in their thoughts and, and, um, and some of the concerns as to why it necessitates it. And more importantly, you know, for a county our size, um, with the industrial expansion that we're seeing in growth, it's very odd that we have such a small emergency management department. It's really not fitting for a county of our size. And so it's very, it's very unique that, that it would be your thought to, I mean, I like this, that it would be there to augment emergency management because it would strengthen our resiliency for times of crisis and emergency. In addition, it would be there for day-to-day operations and day-to-day permitting, um, regulatory environment, which is what we want, right? As we see our county grow and grow and extend into the unincorporated areas, I think what you're seeing is the, is the need for consistency in the rulemaking. And that way we can protect all citizens despite the fact they live outside of city limit.
Great, Judge.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation.
Well, I'm just curious, how long will it take you to get that back to us? About, just a timeline?
How about we do it next meeting?
Because it's important. I mean, we, we brought it up twice.
Let's put it on as a workshop and an action item for the next agenda. If that's too soon, then so be it, but let's do that.
October 30th.
Thank you, Tyner. And by the way, there is a fire marshal conference in, um, Austin, if you're interested, next, the 21st.
Sounds like you can get everything you need.
Thank y'all.
Okay. Tyner, you, you heard the direction of the court.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you. Um, at this time, we have a, I have several things pending here on the next item. One is to refer to the county attorney for a legal consultation and advice which would happen in executive session. Um, a county attorney, Jimenez, I also want to make note that I have on my public comment, folks who would like to make comment on this agenda item. And, uh, that item for the transparency and purposes of the court is to discuss and consider Gulf Copper's request to be granted the foreign trade zones status and consider related agreements. And so at this time, I'm looking for, um, I need a motion to, um, because advice will be given and it's, uh, also listed, motion in a second.
Judge, would it be appropriate to just do all of our executive session while we're back there or is that?
Well, I would like to do that, but I have other people here that are waiting for a variety of reasons, including the sheriff, which I'm incredibly mindful of his time.
And the city.
Um, I, I can tell you that I will move everything as quickly as I can and I do apologize, but I think it's best if we, if those who wanted to make comment, let me, let me, let you know, for a three, for the purposes, uh, of, of, of your edification, the motion is to table only for the purposes of receiving the information in executive session. We will come out and have the full due process. Okay? You just have to be a little patient with us.
Okay.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second.
What are you looking for, to go into executive?
Executive session.
Sure.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, let's, let's move on quickly. I've got a, um, number four is discuss other potential funding sources for the CIP program projects and including CDBG, disaster recovery, MIT, SIB, TaxDOT and TIDM and, um.
So judge, I'm sorry, we're going to go through everything else and then come back to?
Yes, we are. But I'm going to try to move this along, including this item, which I'm not certain is, is ripe at this moment. Um, Maria, what, what would you like to address the court with?
Um.
Just kind of a general presentation?
Yeah, just a general, so.
Can you?
Some discussions, uh, recently with the general land office, because the general land office is getting a lot of, um, disaster money from HUD. Um, so I think in some discussions at the last public hearing that they had here in Corpus Christi, um, they had mentioned that projects that we have listed in our capital improvements plan could preclude us from applying for grant funding. So we want to make it clear, um, from, I think the conversations that they've had, we want to make it clear that some of the projects in the capital improvements plans, which I know we've had discussions before, um, could possibly be funded through grants. And I think we just need to make that clear when we, I think finalize the plan. Um, so we did list out some potential funding sources, but we did put, including but not limited to.
Right. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you did a good job and I'm going to kind of create a little more clarity. So basically commissioners, what's very important is that we have on the record, uh, in our capital improvement plan, that we're going to go through there and designate all the sources of funding that are available. And the reason is, is that the general land office is still formulating their rules for the $4 billion worth of money. And it was a little frightening at first when they mentioned that, that projects within capital improvement plans might be excluded because they have already been given a funding source. That is not the case in our plan. We have some funding, the 40 million through the tax note, but not all the funding. And so the purpose here is for Maria to make all of us aware that all these different sources of funding will be added and I will get you a new and improved CIP that shows which funding, depending, all the ones she listed would apply to each, um, uh, to each project. And so this is very important that we put it on the record, that the general land office, you know, understands that we do not have all the dollars and that's why we seek grant funding through their program. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
And Judge, real quick, I, I, I wanted this on the agenda just to show the court that while you may not have certain CIP projects in your precinct, there are, um, other roads that we are applying for grants and there's going to be a lot more to come in all the precincts with regard to the things that we apply for and grants.
Absolutely. In fact, uh, last court, Maria, uh, we made reference to, and we should have incorporated today, the 4.4 million dollars through the CDBG, uh, funding that you have already submitted application for includes several county roads. And in addition, this $4 billion, we, we will start applying as of April 1st, 2020. But the rulemaking between now and February necessitates that we get our ducks in a row so that we know. And then of course, there's, uh, what am I missing? SIB, that's the state infrastructure bank. We're going to be identifying those roads that could be eligible for funding through, through SIB and through TaxDOTs. TIF, that's the transportation, um, um, infrastructure fund. And then TIDM, you're going to hear later about TIDM's grants.
TIDM as, um, I think right now they have a pre-disaster mitigation, flood mitigation, uh, grant, so we're trying to identify some projects.
Right. So, so anyway, so that's why it was so important. We wanted it to be on the record so that if ever came back, that, you know, this one was a project in our CIP that, that we qualified it. It's in there as an overall identification, but that we're going to, we're going to put all sources, including GLO MIT money that, that can be applied. Is that correct? Okay. And we haven't done that yet, but Maria and I will be working on that together this week. And I expect by October 30th, you'll have a advanced, um, and edited version. Okay, I'll have to work with, with LAN on that as well. Okay. All right, that's just a discussion. Uh, there's no action needed at this time unless you all have any questions for Maria or myself. Okay, the next one is discuss and consider, oh my goodness, discuss and consider selection of Lockwood Andrews Newman, Newnum for, uh, master services agreement, uh, for services not limiting, my goodness, including, but not limited to updating New Oasis County's hazard mitigation plan and CIP implementation services. At this time, commissioners, I would like to bifurcate this agenda item and just simply discuss the New Oasis County Hazard Mitigation Plan so that we could have a further opportunity to, uh, bring to you, um, further information regarding the capital improvement program implementation services piece of it. So therefore, um, the, the motion that I'm looking for is the New Oasis County Hazard Mitigation Plan and selecting LAN for this purpose. And I, I definitely have thoughts to offer, but I would look for a motion at this time.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Let me tell you, and I, I have it, Maggie, I'm sorry, Tyner, you're going to send it to everybody, which is the GLO public hearing presentation that I attended on behalf of New Oasis County. We were the host and, um, they have very specific, this goes back to the $4 billion worth of funding that's available and they have a very specific, um, uh, requirement of, um, really looking and emphasizing your local hazard mitigation plans. And so I, um, I made inquiry and we did do one back in 2017 and the court at that time hired Lockwood Andrews. And so what we seek is to supplement it post Harvey. We need it post Harvey so that it's germane to, to these, to this grant writing because as we know, we're now, everything has changed post Harvey. However, it's going to be a plan that doesn't have to include all hazards. So for example, the GLO doesn't want to hear anything about wildfires. I don't want to hear anything about droughts. This is just wind and water activities. So it will be a, a limited update of the hazard mitigation plan as it pertains to those areas in order to, to conserve dollars there. Did I lose Michael? Michael? Michael, um, do you want to come forward just for a moment? There is a reference to master service agreements and I think it's worthy of a mention for transparency, why we use that language.
Judge, this is again, just for the.
Hazard mitigation plan only.
So that the clerks clear the capital improvement program was bifurcated out of that motion.
I think you.
Making sure.
Madam clerk, that was clear? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, when we use the term master services agreement, what we're, what we're laying is a, the, the county can then produce work authorizations later on, uh, very much like we do in pre-positioned contracts for emergency management. And so that's what we're doing here with this Lockwood, Lockwood, ah, I'm just going to call them LAN.
I'm the same way. I got tongue tied.
Uh, and, and so by having this, uh, plan approved, um, and this agreement, you will have the tools necessary when the work presents itself to be able to, um, put them to work on those particular projects as they, uh, as they come up.
Judge, I call a question unless anybody else has anything.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay. Uh, receive an update from MetroCom and I know Peter Collins is here. Um, uh, related to interlocal agreements, I think Kathy's here as well. Who's going to be presenting today, Tyner?
I think the important, uh, component is the daily wells, um, for Peter Collins, but Kathy certainly can go ahead and report on MetroCom.
I'm going to let her come up because there's also a piece of this agenda item relating to the three-year audit and it's just for information only, Kathy, so I, not rushing anybody, but again, will, there'll be, as they say, there's more to come.
Uh, good morning.
Good morning.
And Judge. Um, I just wanted to update you. MetroCom is moving forward to create standard operating procedures. Uh, the committee is evaluating the MetroCom information technology needs and the New Oasis County is currently reviewing the audit engagement letter in order to proceed with the 217, 218 and 219 audit.
Right, so a three-year audit?
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, it's okay to reveal that the mayor and I are the board of directors of MetroCom?
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me? And, um, and that it was our agreement to, uh, um, divide the costs equally?
Yes, ma'am.
And that the cost that's been presented to us is $8,000 and therefore the burden to the county is a $4,000 cost. Is that correct?
That is correct. And by both paying for the split of that audit, it should allow you both to view the full audit responses.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else to consider there?
No.
And you'll bring us a updated, you know, and, and the county attorney is reviewing those documents on behalf of the county and, and all of those good things that they do.
Yes, ma'am. And our IT department is reviewing the cost of the IT present.
Okay, great.
Presentations. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. And that's just to get us, everybody, that's really just to get us current. You know, we, we just, we look back and policies haven't been updated in a long time and agreements haven't been looked at in a long time and, and it's nice to be able to get everything back into the 2020, uh, calendar and that's, that's the purpose. Um, is there anything else, Tyner, on that? It says an interlocal agreement. Do we need to, um, there's no action at this time?
Uh, there's a MetroCom committee that continues to meet. There's a meeting today that Kathy's going to attend and Elva, and the purpose of those meetings are up to, to update the interlocal. We just wanted to let the court, uh, know what was going on.
Okay, I appreciate that very much. Commissioners, no questions? I'll move on. Discuss and consider authorizing county judge to execute a correction right-of-way easement to the city of Corpus Christi for Newport Pass Road. And I'm going to ask Juan, or no, who's, who's got this?
Um, I can take it, Judge.
Okay. Sorry, Juan.
And I want to say.
I saw that look like, hey, in this court, always be prepared.
I want to say thank you to the county attorney's office for, um, helping us with this. Um, the, uh, city requested some time ago, uh, that they needed to make some corrections to the easement for some things that they're doing around Newport Pass. And, uh, Kent Brown and the county attorney's office worked with me and Sonny over at the city and we're basically, um, asking that the judge execute, execute a correction right-of-way easement. Uh, some things, uh, changed slightly out there and some activities that the city's doing out there calls for an adjustment to the right-of-way. So we recommend approval.
And, um, do I have a motion?
So move.
And I need a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We forget that you are court manager and government liaison and affairs and thank you for that because that's really the, a perfect example of, of your good duty, working with the city and, and helping in this correction. Title is so critical and I appreciate that, Tyner. The next item is discuss game room regulations in accordance with chapter 234 of the Texas Local Government Code. And we have a variety of folks here today, uh, who are going to, um, discuss with us. At this time, I'll ask who the lead will be.
Judge, I just wanted to make sure too, that, uh, all the commissioners got a late email from Kathleen White on this issue. from Kathleen White on this issue, and I would ask that everybody take note of it. I'm not sure exactly where we're going with this, but she has some concerns over this, and she expressed them to all the commissioners. I just...
Well, I think where we're going with this is, it's a discussion, there's no action item at this time. I'm going to suggest that the day that we decide, and this might be a heck of an October 30th, but that when we do a workshop for the Fire Marshal, that there might be an opportunity to have some real discussion with regards to the game room regulations. But we have to start, and this is part of it, and so today is a start. And I intend that, well, just like Fire Marshal needs to be tended to quickly, this discussion needs to as well. So, Tyner, did you want to start?
Just in the way of background, Judge, litigation change, that's why we're bringing it up now.
You mean legislation?
The legislation eliminated the population bracket that Harris County used to develop their game room regulations. So what happened this session, this past session, '86, the legislature eliminated any population requirements, opening up the regulations to all counties in the state of Texas. And so that's why we're here. The court does not have to do anything if the court does not want to, the way I understand it, but if the court wants to do something, we do now have the authority.
And I believe that it's in the best interest of Nuasis County to discuss having some regulatory authority and some framework, and I also know that the Harris County guidelines have been provided to the court. In addition, it was a subject of a county judges' conference as both Commissioner Gonzalez and I attended, and I've brought back some documentation to give to the county attorney. I have not given it to you yet, but I just got back, and I'll make sure that you get what TAC is at least looking at, right? But they have not made any formal recommendations, it was just the opinion of one former prosecutor. Having said that, I think some of the main issues that you should consider for thought is whether or not regulating under the Sheriff's Department is appropriate. The second thing you should consider is what permit application fee should be considered. I think there also should be a consideration, just like in TABC, that no felons operate these rooms. I think there also should be a consideration of whether or not alcohol should be served in these rooms, and there are others. These are the highlights that I present to you. In addition, there ought to be some very serious teeth and penalties for those that violate these regulations. Harris County, for instance, has a $10,000 fine. It does get interesting when you start figuring out in the permitting process, are you going to be charging per room or per machine? The subject matter that I bring to you for information only is that it's a, per machine is better, because that way, there is...
Judge, I'm confused. I think there's a, if I understand wrong, $1,000 is the max you can do for a permit.
I'm confused. Are we trying to let these happen?
No, that's not...
No, that's not, it's a two different, we're not doing gaming rooms, what it is, they're trying to eliminate gaming rooms, because some are using them for monies. It's more like a, it's supposed to be prize rooms, you know, but, you know, we know what they're doing, right? But I think the max here is $1,000 for a permit, right? Am I right, Sheriff? I don't know if it's...
It's maximum.
Yeah, $1,000 you can charge for, no matter how many machines you have.
Okay. I think that the idea is, is that the legislature has not declared them illegal, and the Attorney General has rendered no opinion as to their legality. So therefore, you have them all over our community, and the answer is not, the question rather, is not whether, we're not legislators. We uphold the law, but policy is part of what the court's mandate is, and if they're going to be in our community and in our neighborhoods, we should, the question for us is whether or not we should create a regulatory framework, and I think the answer is, we should.
Remember, it's not for money either, it's not gaming rooms for money, it's supposed to be actually gaming rooms for prizes, and that's the whole thing.
Right.
We know what they're doing really behind doors, right? So when you get a permit, it's not you can gamble for money, it's a permit that you got a machine that you're going to get a prize.
That's right.
Judge, can we hear from the Sheriff's Department?
Absolutely. And I actually also have one other person, and that's Rick Adams speaking on 4A3. Mr. Adams, is that correct? So you'll be after Sheriff Hooper, and I'm also going to ask the sheriff to have anybody else that he wishes to...
I believe there's some others.
There are. I might have to have you redo your, Edward, could you be so kind? Whoever signed up for this needs to double-check their item number? You put number eight, just needs to just change that real quick. Sheriff, welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for considering this. And basically, I think how I would like to start is by telling a little history why we think there's a need for regulation, and I'm going to defer to Captain Garza on that because he's been behind a lot of our effort on it. But the bottom line is, what we're talking about here are illicit gaming rooms. And I think where a lot of the confusion comes in is by the county regulating and putting a procedure in place for us to monitor the activity and ultimately enforcement action. It's, not in any way is going to legalize gambling.
Correct.
And there's the big, what we believe in law enforcement, we believe that a lot of the activities that are occurring in these gaming rooms is gambling, it's illegal. But it's real problematic, next to impossible, for us to enforce the penal code gambling law because of the nature of these gaming rooms, especially when they're private clubs to some degree, and we can't gain access to them without a warrant. Getting a warrant, getting inside is extremely difficult, and that's why we think the county commissioners ought to take advantage of this opportunity for us to make these gaming rooms a safer place. And Robert will tell you here in a minute some of the incidents that occur in these gaming rooms and frequently go unreported because of the lack of our accessibility to these places.
Sheriff, do you happen to know a guesstimate on how many we have in our county?
Twenty, and these are the ones that are confirmed by...
Correct.
Our patrol deputies have given us a list of about 21.
Okay, thank you.
And they're scattered in the unincorporated areas, oh, let me, in the unincorporated areas of the county, 21. I spoke with the police chief and his organized crime unit yesterday, and there are over 30 of them inside the city limits of Corpus Christi. And that's also Nuasis County, so we're over 50 countywide.
Wow, okay.
But the ones we're looking at are everywhere from County Road 91 to Sweetwater, County Road 93, FM 3354, Deer Lane, Commissioner Maras in your neck of the woods, in the smaller areas, and they're embedded in the neighborhood.
But they're also on Everhart Road, and in the words, they're everywhere, too.
Yeah, all over, and I think there's somebody here that can talk about those commercial environments where they're set up. But Robert, if you would, Captain Garza, if you would, tell a little about the history of the incidents that were brought to our attention and how we dealt with them.
Good morning. Yes, well, we've had robberies, we've had drug use, there's more than, you count it, 21?
21.
And they're growing. And what they do is that they hide, they're out there, they build privacy fences surrounding it, they hide their activities, they don't want anyone to know that these are game rooms because, like you all explained, the mere having the machine is not illegal, but the activities that occur there, the drug use, the gang, you know, now they're bringing in gangs to operate these game rooms, and what better way to make their money? We're not going to sell drugs anymore, we're going to have and operate these illegal game rooms. And like I was saying, they, if these, if they knew that these were illegal, why do they hide? Why do they go deep into the brush and make sure that they post guards up front? They don't allow anyone to go in there unless you're a member, and that's how they keep law enforcement out of there.
But Captain Garza, obviously, some are having illegal activity, as you say, but in Harris County, there's clearly some that are, the idea that they're all illegal is not accurate.
It is accurate.
The Attorney General has not given that order. If they were, we would shut them all down, wouldn't we?
If they pay out cash prizes, which is, which they are, money, how else would they make their money? They're not going to make any money. The operator of the game room is not going to make any money by handing out, like I told Tyner, handing out little rubber lizards and say, here's your prize. They're not going to make any money by doing...
I guess what I'm saying, though, I want to be very careful, some are in plain sight, some are renting in reputable areas of town and in plain sight. If they thought they were illegal, why would they do that in plain sight? I'm trying to be very careful here, it's very important that we, in my opinion, talk about this in a way that we are not adjudicating the law. If they were illegal, the sheriff would have a right to go in and shut them all down. I'm with you here on the illegal, but it's very important for us to uphold whatever the law is that they give us. And when the legislature acted, they acted to enable them, not to disable them. I mean...
I understand what you're saying, but the ones that I've dealt with, the ones that I'm handling, are the ones that are outside the city limits.
Agreed.
Now, I've had people call and ask, hey, the ones inside the city, they're saying that they're legal because they're doing it this way. Well, that's illegal also. And they say, well, how come they haven't shut them down? Well, because they haven't shut them down does not mean that they're illegal. So there's a perception that it's okay if I do it this way, but we're finding out, it's not all right. It's, they're still making the cash payouts, and no one wants to talk about it, no one wants to say that if you get stopped on the highway, on a legal traffic stop and say, where are you coming from? They don't want to tell us they're coming from a game room. They don't, because they know that that's an illegal place to be.
Why don't you start putting the gangs into this thing here? You're going to have the money laundering.
Oh, yes. The, getting, Judge, to your concern about us calling somebody a criminal, right? I get it.
I am worried.
Yeah, and, but the bottom line is, we in law enforcement believe that what is occurring in these game rooms is gambling, and that's a violation of state law. Now, we have worked, and we are working to prove that, but it has become so convoluted and so, the lawyers are fighting each other well on this one, and a lot of it has to do with renaming something like sweepstakes. It's all, and prosecution has been a challenge. Many prosecutors look at this as a very low priority because of they're overloaded with serious, you know, crimes against persons. But like Commissioner Jag was saying, there are crimes against persons occurring, and there are protection brackets, and there is money laundering. There is so much money involved in this business that is unaccounted for, it's untaxed, and money laundering is the end result of that, and organized crime is involved. We're finding, and I got this information directly from the organized crime unit, much of the money leaves the area. The incident we know about, or maybe we don't know about in Falfurius a couple of years ago, was a multimillion dollar operation, it was bigger than the city budget of Falfurius. And so there's so much money involved, and it ultimately gets commingled in organized crime money with other drug money and human trafficking money.
But at this point, are you recommending that we go through a permit process?
Yeah, we definitely need to have the discussion.
Right, so I just want to make sure we don't permit illegal activities.
Exactly.
And that's my point here, Captain, it's to make sure that you understand that we're on the side of public safety and public law enforcement, and I'm also on the side of the law. And so it's very important, why would you permit something that's illegal? I just want to make sure, I want the Attorney General to be the one to say, you know, and so it's very important that we say, we're permitting, I want us to permit, I want us to regulate. I hope that the permitting is so onerous that no good illegal, no good person would be able to apply and get one of these, and therefore, then the law enforcement could step in.
The only thing about the permit, which is really the open door, the permit will let you in that door because you got to go check the permit, that they're complying with that.
Well, and that's why I'm asking, I want to know what you're advocating for, because...
Yeah, and that permit process will allow us to prove the gambling is happening.
Agreed.
Prove the money laundering is happening, and to prove the organized crime nexus.
Right.
The permitting process will allow us to prove that.
That's right.
So right now, do you have access? Can you go in there? And if you don't, this tool to regulate it would give you what?
It would give us access.
And right now, you can't go in there?
Well, if you, it's next to impossible to get inside without a search warrant.
Okay.
Search warrant is next to impossible to obtain without getting an undercover agent inside that environment. And that's the only way we've been able to work these cases in the past, or other sheriff's office, or law enforcement, is to sneak somebody in there and to see firsthand the gambling that is occurring, and the other illegal activity that is occurring, and then develop the warrant process from that.
Well, Sheriff, I support this, I think we should always hear from law enforcement.
You know what, there's a lot of people here that would like to speak to it, and I'd like...
Absolutely, and we're going to call on them. I just want to make sure we're very clear that what you're advocating for is something that I think this court could be ready to act upon. The Harris County guidelines are, were originally developed for eight-liners, quite frankly, and in fact, they're still called the eight-liner regulations, and I've read all of them, and we've discussed all the good things, all the good components. But just make sure, you know, that we're clear. We do not permit for illegal activity, okay? You have to permit because it's declared legal, and it's y'all's job to make certain that the Attorney General hears from law enforcement so that they know that we need guidance, right? But at the judges' conference that we just attended, the speaker, who was, he's the leading expert on this, and he is completely against them, gave us documents to bring back to our county attorneys for the permitting process. So I just want to make sure that people understand that we're permitting because that's the only way we can get a control on the situation. That's what, that was my point.
The bottom line is that the statute is very specific. Your authority to regulate are very, very specific as to what you can regulate, and you basically regulate or restrict the location of, and how many game rooms are out there, and how many machines, but that's pretty much it. And so the inspection has to do with the regulations, are they following the regulations? And then there's enforcement provisions, there's criminal, and there's civil under that particular, those regulations themselves. But again, it's restricted to what your authority is. That still doesn't negate the enforcement side on the criminal side for purposes of gambling, that still exists, that didn't go away, this doesn't make that go away, that's still in existence. But like, you know, the sheriff said, you know, obviously, they're having difficulty enforcing that portion of the law.
Right, because the legislature has not given clear direction, and is not, that's the...
That's, obviously, this is not for the purpose of gambling.
Of course, that's correct. That's what I'm trying to point out, that this is not, we do not endorse that in this county. Okay, let's call on folks, because they've been waiting patiently. I'm just going to call in the order that you were signing in, Ms. Suzanne Taylor.
Hello, Suzanne Taylor, I'm here on behalf of the bingo operators in town. I don't know if you're aware, I talked to several of the commissioners and let them know, we have 53 nonprofits operating their bingo games in Corpus Christi, well, Nuasis County, which pretty much is Corpus Christi. I don't know if you're aware of some of the names, so I picked out some that you might recognize. Besides all the numerous Catholic charities and schools, you have Alamein Shrine, American GI Forum, Big Brothers Big Sisters, Corpus Christi Council of the Navy League, Jewish Community Council, Kiwanis Lost Pet Hotline, Bethune, Early Development Nursery, National Little League, Peewees Pet Adoption, Rotary Clubs, Outside Youth Football, YWCA, the Art Community Center, Air Civic Center, so you can get the idea.
Got it.
I mean, some of those you're bound to have recognized the name of. So we've got a lot of wonderful nonprofits in our community. Last year, these nonprofits were able to distribute for the charitable causes in Nuasis County and Corpus Christi, and has to be spent within the state of Texas, $1,995,901. You want to see that number go down? Let these game rooms come into the wild, wild west. I've already talked to this sheriff about this earlier, saying, are we just going to let it be the wild, wild west? The money that goes to the nonprofits is spent here for the good of our community and the good of Texas. It has to all be spent here. These other places, the money is going to funnel in, and it funnels right out of the bingo halls into these individuals and right back out wherever it goes, and I don't know how to trace that. But I wanted to let you know that the bingo halls already operate under the arm of Big Brother, because our biggest competitor is the Texas Lottery Commission, and the Texas Lottery Commission is our regulator. So you can imagine, we have really strict rules, everybody in the hall is licensed, everybody on the board has to run through DPS, everybody working in the hall. If you're going to allow the eight-liner machines, I did bring you also the...
They're not eight-liners, because those are illegal.
Oh, sorry, the ones that look, that have the eight lines but are called sweepstakes machines? If we operate the sweepstakes machines, I also brought you the regulations Victoria County has come up with, to see if maybe you can smidge those in with the ones that you brought from Harris County. But I want you to know that letting the eight-liners, I mean, they're already hurting the bingo games, and I'm Doug, they ain't come from bingo. The previous quarter, I'm on the Navy, I'm on the board of several of these organizations. The Navy League didn't get a distribution at all because we were actually eating into funds that we had previously made. So it cuts, and it cuts huge. So I would love for you to ask the charities that would to be involved, if you're going to make regulations, I would like to ask you, if you're going to open up the game rooms, let the charities, I mean, it would be great if they could get the money, even if you can go into their bingo funds, it could go into their general accounts, let these 53 charities make some money from these machines, because their non-cash prizes could actually be bingo product that people are going to use to stay and play bingo in the bingo hall. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I do want to make sure, so you're in support of what the sheriff is...
Absolutely.
Absolutely, got to regulate them.
Right, and, and so it's clear, I don't think anybody, I haven't heard anybody up here, I certainly, we're, we're not advocating or wanting these eight liner sweepstakes machines, whatever they're called, we don't want to have anything to do with them. So we, we want to do whatever we can, I think, to help support the Sheriff's efforts and the charities' efforts to do it legitimately. So if there's other things that you can think of that we need to do, and I'll look, I just, I looked at the Harris County ones and I'll look at those Victoria ones as well because I, I don't want anybody to walk out of here thinking we're advocating for eight liners or sweepstakes machines. That's not what this discussion is. This discussion is how do we, you know, regulate within our ability to do so because the legislature has only given us so much latitude. So I think we're on the same page here and I don't, I think, I don't, I don't...
We are, and Oasis County also derives money from the state of Texas because of bingo as well. And, and that was...
Legitimate bingo.
It's quite, right, look, I mean, let's, let's be clear here. That's what I'm trying to explain. The law is very, is, is not helpful in this regard, but it does allow us the opportunity to regulate, to increase public safety and to give the tools to law enforcement. And that's why we're bringing this forward. But it's very careful to use the right words. If you do not use the right words, just like any good judge, you're not able to use the law to your advantage. So we would really, our words, as we talked about this morning, are, are need to be fitly words.
I think we're going, we're going after those who are doing it incorrectly.
That's right.
We're not trying to hurt the legitimate bingo operators or the charities.
That's right.
Who use the bingo in an appropriate way. I believe all we are trying to do is look at providing more teeth to, to do what we can to discourage all these, as you say, the wild, wild west. We don't want that to become that at all. And especially, I guess it's happening more so in the unincorporated areas, Sheriff, is , and it, there, it's going on here too, a lot too. So we need to be able to put more, uh, in place to, to help the Sheriff do that, okay?
Correct.
You're calling them sweepstakes machines, but the sweepstakes machines, you get paid cash. They're not handing out product. I, I'm chicken to walk into the places because I never know the last time, probably five years ago, um, when everybody got busted, all of the sweepstakes rooms. And I, I had been in there three days earlier checking them out and I was so glad I wasn't there laying on the ground with everybody else.
Right, my, my recommendation and advice is don't be doing that because you need law enforcement to be the investigative, you know, agency here. It will, you could definitely wind up in, in, in a terrible situation. I want to make sure, Sam, are you also signed up for this item? Sam Dalton, we recognize you. Go ahead, you can leave that with Tyner Little, please.
Residing at eight double oh two Villa Franche.
Yes.
Uh, I just want to say real briefly, I, I'm speaking on behalf of, of the board of the, the Navy League. We are a charity, we do derive funds from, uh, bingo. We had an example not too long ago, when the game rooms were growing, bingo reserve, uh, monies went down dramatically. In fact, there was a quarter that we received none at all. And we use our money to help our military people within this county, for that matter, in Clayburg County. Uh, so it's very important to all charities, certainly to the Navy League. So we appreciate the opportunity for the county to have a regulation that primarily just gives law enforcement access with that opportunity, without having to go through the whole, uh, warranting or whatever the Sheriff called it. But being able to just say, okay, here I am, I'm going to look around, uh, or put people in there to look around. If an activity is legally operated, they have nothing to worry about. If they are illicit, as Houston's, uh, regulations indicated, they're trying to avoid the adverse secondary effects of illicit game rooms. I think that's a very important point, thank you.
Thank you so much. Archie Acosta?
I'm here for Agenda Nine.
I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. I'm, I'm just going down the list. I just want to make sure, would it be Rick Adams?
Uh, four eight three.
Okay, four eight three, all right, okay, then I guess, is there anybody else on this subject matter? David Loeb, I'm going to sign you in because you're not on here.
Come on in, David.
You're signed in.
Thank you, I, I appreciate it, Judge. I was actually at a meeting with your sister, so...
Oh, good.
To sign in, but, uh, I, I appreciate you guys having this. Um, I've been working with the Sheriff for a while on this and the, the Judge. The worst mistake I've made in real estate is leasing to one of these things. Um, the, uh, sales pitch was, yes, it's like electronic bingo. Uh, I've rented bingo, Weber Bingo, uh, with Kathleen White was my tenant for a very long time. Um, these things don't operate at all like bingo. These things operate like unregulated casinos. There is a huge criminal element in it. Uh, I think the largest distributor of the software has multiple felony convictions in, uh, San Antonio. Um, you know, the, uh, it's, it's bad. Um, uh, when we tossed one out, um, the, uh, response was, uh, four separate incidents of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of, uh, property damage, an arson threat and a person running into the business and firing off a gun, uh, with a bunch of people in the bar. So, uh, it needs to get cleaned up, law enforcement needs the tool to clean it up. Uh, the easy way to do that is to, instead of making them go through the rigmarole of getting a undercover agent in, it's to require people to have permits to operate them. Then the first leg is, do you have your permit? We're here to see your permit. Oh, and you don't have your permit, we're shutting you down, bye. Um, that is, that is the simple toolkit, you know, I, I've, I've given the Judge and the Sheriff some suggestions from my experience on top of the Houston ordinance, uh, but the Houston ordinance is a very good start, uh, and it will help a lot. Uh, I've offered the Sheriff, uh, as I guess some form of penance for me having, uh, let them slip past and believe that it was going to be like bingo and they were actually going to give money to charity rather than gangs, uh, that, uh, if he needs space to store seized equipment, I will provide space to the county free of charge that I have for you guys to store seized equipment and pending drop. Uh, it's illegal gambling, uh, for the most part. There may be a possibility of someone operating one illegally, but it, it doesn't, I, I've, I've rented the bingo halls, this ain't bingo. Um, and if any bingo operators are worried about that it's somehow targeting them, that's not the purpose, that's not the intent. Um, but I, I'd encourage you to take action as quickly as possible because I think the, the state saw what a huge problem this was and expanded the legislation to allow local law enforcement more tools and you, you guys really need to give it to them. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, David. What do we need to do to expedite? That, that's a good question. Where do we go from here?
Uh, well, I mean, get, getting, there's two ways. One is just, you know, if you want something quick, pass the, pass the Houston regs, um, and then maybe set up a committee, uh, to alter them over time based on, uh, on feedback from law enforcement and, and the community.
And, and we already are ahead of the game because of David's advocacy, he's come to our office, we, we got the Houston regs, we've already reviewed them in my office, they've already been sent to Lauda. There was already a committee that was set up, kind of impromptu, and we've already had, uh, we, I asked Commissioner Gonzalez, because he has a peace officer background, to sit on that committee and make the recommendations to us and that's, we are way far down the line. Today was an opportunity because we had come from the conference where this was addressed to really get this in the forefront, that these are the types of things you want to look at. Um, and so we want to help law enforcement get rid of the bad guys, I mean, and girls to whatever extent there's females in, involved. There's absolutely no doubt in our mind, illegal activity is illegal, period. But you have to do it within the framework so that you can make sure that you have the right type of access so the charges will stick. And the way to do that is through permitting.
When will we have the ordinance in front of us? That was all my question was, I'm ready to go.
Well, I know you are, but you haven't read it yet and you need to read it. You need to read it and you need to have your county attorney really look at it because what's good for Harris County, just so you know, we could make ours stronger, okay? It's not the same thing.
I'm just saying, when are we going to have it? I'll read, I'll read whatever is in front of me, like I've read.
I would, I would say this, the, the...
That's all I'm asking.
Right, well...
The purpose, uh, the, the Judge kind of got the ball rolling and, uh, Jag came in because of his history in law enforcement and I think to the purpose of today's meeting, and I want to speak for the Judge, but I guess I will for a second, is to get all of the commissioners, get this in front of all the commissioners, so you guys, yeah, let's go do this and then we'll go do it.
Yeah, me and Lo, I'm just asking for when it's coming back and if I can...
Yeah, you, you...
I appreciate it. And I promise I will read it.
As I say, it worked, we're on the, it worked.
All you need is an agenda item.
Right, so we're looking at October 30th, November 6th, I can't remember what the, what the date is, October 30.
Whatever gives you all time, but let's, I mean, I appreciate it.
And Tyner, just as a precaution, make sure everybody has a copy of the, of the Harris County.
It's in our book.
It's attached to the...
I thought so, okay, just double checking.
And I'm sure we have, but we also have the Sheriff's input as well, correct?
Right, and we also, I'm going to provide you what TAC also provided to us in the conference, okay? There's, there's, there's a process and we're working on it at the speed of light.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, anybody else on this? Okay, presentation only. I want to apologize, I, I try to look at Tyner's notes if, if they're court related and I need to move up an item that he had sent me about 15 minutes ago. I apologize to the City of Corpus Christi and, and Peter Collins, I missed it, but I'm going to move up your item 4D1 because you have to be back at the city and I'm so sorry, I, I just missed it. Uh, Michael, 4D1, is it discuss and consider authorizing sole source purchase of law enforcement radio upgrades with Daily Wells Communications, Inc. Michael will start us off. Peter Collins is the Chief Information Officer for the City of Corpus Christi. He has been working with Daily Wells at length on this, um, on this procurement and special financing and Michael, take it, take us through it.
Yeah, so, uh, basically, this is just going to cover the purchase of the hardware required for this, for all of the radios and, uh, we're going to have a three payment schedule on this. And the first payment is going to come from our 1901 4700 Metrocom Radio Replacement Fund. And then future payments will be allocated during, uh, budget cycles. I do have an updated, uh, quote to give you, there's no changes in the price, we just added some language on page two, uh, which we include on all of these type of items, which regards availability of funds, uh, that speaks to pecuniary obligations of the county or contingent upon timely appropriation of sufficient readily available funds under the state statutes of the state of Texas.
And, and although Dale's not here, I'm going to address this, uh, for the Auditor's Department, does this also take into consideration the, the financing in three equal payments? This proposal?
Yes.
It does. So for the Court's clarification, it takes into consideration, the total amount is 2.2 million, let me, let me just read it. 2.167994.91 for the radios. And this is a comprehensive portable, uh, full keypad, portable scan, uh, mobile, uh, the remotes and, um, well, two different utilizations of the mobile remotes. And then, um, the last one is the, is the P25, the, the phase two upgrade on the portables as well, or the trunks.
Where's the money coming from?
So the money coming from is we have, um, the first payment, oh, if you divide that in, into three equal payments, we have, um, escrowed dollars that are available, uh, for the radio upgrades and the first payment of 722664.97. Just tell me the, the category.
It's 1901 4700, the Metrocom.
Can you confirm?
Yes, uh, and I would just inform, uh, that the other two payments, we have not identified funding.
That's correct, and that's what that CO note will be in November, currently, uh, the tax note. So when we get to the next piece of this, Commissioners, if you're making your notes on CIP, we need the next, it's possible that those, um, would be coming from those tax notes.
Yeah, I believe in my conversations with Dale, uh, he said we have a substantial portion of payment number two of the entire amount.
Right. The idea is, is that this financing is at zero percent interest, is that correct, Peter?
Yes, Judge.
Yes, and, and can you confirm that the City of Corpus Christi is under the same type of model and, and at zero percent, three equal payments?
Yes, Judge, um, we're actually person, be purchasing 6.9 million in two different phases, but yes, it's zero percent for three years. There's 14 entities in the radio system and everybody's working off of the same price sheet. And the opportunity from Harris and Daily Wells was zero percent interest for three years. This is a win-win across the board because we can never move the radio project forward as far as the infrastructure with the towers and the repeaters until we solve the radios that are obsolete because they broadcast in EDAX. And as long as we're broadcasting EDAX, we're wasting our money upgrading the system. So this is exciting, this is a great step forward.
But why doesn't everybody be able to operate in the same system?
Right.
Yes, sir, yeah.
And the life of these radios should be another 15, 20 years?
In, in that range, there's no end of life on these radios right now and eventually when they, when it does come, it's usually five or seven years past that point.
Okay, okay, so that's great. So again, uh, make note that, um, we will make that decision together, um, on the allocation of the dollars, but, um, but between the money that we have saved for this project and the money that we have just borrowed, we will be able to pay for, for all. In addition, this is one of those, when Maria told you we need to update and make sure other funding sources, to the extent that any of our funding sources can pay for communication systems, we're going to be pursuing those grants vigorously as well. But we have the dollars to make certain we can make all three payments. Okay, is there an action on that? Uh, we certainly need a motion. Got a motion? A motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, okay. Um, I believe the tower upgrades were worth over half a million dollars. Is that correct, Peter? That, that Daily Wells provided, that Harris Technologies provided, that, that really don't show here, there was some in-kind, uh, contributions that really should be noted by the Court.
Yes, the in-kind contributions about 1.2 million dollars.
1.2, sorry.
Yes, so there's quite a bit in-kind contribution with Daily Wells.
Right.
So it's a win-win for all of us here.
That's great. And thank you to Peter Collins. When I first became Judge in January, this, this amount to the county was going to be about 6 million dollars, a little over. Through really understanding what we needed, understanding what upgrades could be made by Harris Technologies and Daily Wells, that 6 million dollars was able to come down to two and a half. So if you wonder, you know, why it's important to read and to investigate and to really get after each one of these projects diligently, this is the reason. It's a tremendous, uh, tax savings to the, to the, to everybody, so thank you.
Thank you, have a good day.
Uh-huh, thank you so much. Going back in order, um, we are, uh, discuss and consider approving the consent of the removal of a deceased veteran's remains from Duncan Cemetery for reinternment in Coastal Bend Veteran Cemetery and authorize myself as the county judge to execute the consent form. Do I have a motion and a second? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Um, the next one is the receiving of the update on the county foreyard by the Department of Public Works and, uh, that's the Department of Public Works, not the Department of Fireworks, so...
Judge, could we, could we maybe go to some of these ones that people are waiting for and that's, that's a staff only proposal and that could take a while.
Well, John is back, um...
I mean, these people in Port A have been waiting for a long time.
Well, you know, everybody's waiting, so I'm, I'm, I want to make sure that I go through this agenda. The reason that the city, uh, needs to be back is because they're, they're employee and a public servant and everybody else, I, I always make sure that the public servants are taken care of. I am happy to advance, we are almost done. I can, I can hold on grants and on public works, but I'd like to finish my agenda and I'll take us into executive session after, um, I finish the regular agenda. And that way we can, we can take care of everybody else that's been waiting. That means I'm going to be advancing grants, public works, purchasing an auditor, and I do believe that is, um, uh, at the discretion that I'm going to make to accommodate those that have been in the audience for a long time, but that's the best I can do, I need to finish the, my, this regular agenda.
Judge, you may have had somebody sign up for the item that you just approved. I think, I glanced at the sign-in sheet.
I certainly did, that was Archie Acosta. Okay, ask him. Okay, ask him.
It wasn't his favor anyway.
It was. Mr. Acosta, with my apologies, sir, please, you came for a public comment, let me allow you the opportunity to make such a comment.
Well, I guess, Judge and Commissioners, I guess there's not anything, anything for me to say anymore, I approved what I needed.
Okay.
The other was, is that the veteran was overlooked by Social Services, wasn't presented to the Veterans Department to see if he was a veteran, and he's a career military veteran that been served our nation for 20 years, and all we were asking was for your signature to move him from Duncan to the Veteran Cemetery where he properly deserves his, his honor and his rights.
It would be my honor to sign that document.
I appreciate you, Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, I will take a motion then to...
Are you presenting something?
To the, to do the, discuss and consider the approval of the proposed 2018, 2019 projects to be funded under the Regional Transportation Street Improvement Program. I don't think this will take very long, I believe all of us have submitted our projects. We decided that we were going to hold on that.
And, and if you just approve him, Judge, we'll carry him out with the RTA.
Right, I just want to make sure all Commissioners know that you were asked to supply the Regional Transportation Authority, your proposed projects, that you have certain dollars that are allocated.
So moved.
I've got a motion, second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. I do need to let you know that I have made one allocation, and I still believe I have some dollars left, if there is a project that, the project that I advanced was Port Aransas Bus Stop at Horace Caldwell Pier. If there are other projects that are important to either of the Commissioners, Vaughn, Mattis, or Jag, that are lacking just a little, if you would contact me, I, I might be able to assist. Okay, at this time, I'm taking us completely out of order, I do not like to do this, but in the, if, in the, in the interest of making certain that, that we do take care of our public, our constituency, our taxpayers, I'm giving authority, I'm giving notice now that Commissioners Court is electing to go into executive session during this meeting, as provided so by the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. We can elect to go into such executive session in accordance with Vernon's Texas Codes 551 oh seven one oh seven two oh seven three oh seven four seven four five seven six eight six eight seven, and that we designate to hold our executive session to consult with our attorney, including matters relating to litigation, real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, termination, county advisory board is, bodies, security devices, and economic development negotiations, and any other matters that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion of executive session, the Commissioners Court may, in open session, take such action as appropriate on items discussed in executive session. At this time, I'm gabbling us out, I need a time, I don't have it here, hold on.
12:20.
12:20, gabbling us out, we will return after executive session. Okay, thank you so much, clerks in particular, for taking a very late lunch break and coming back to us so promptly, thank you to our audience, we're going to resume our schedule Sorry, we, we took our agenda back, here we go. For the purposes of the, of the audience, I am going to advance the item on the foreign trade zone. The time, forgive me. I have 2:07, back on the record at 2:07. You'll recall, we tabled this issue so that we could hear from our counsel in executive session, we do have some items to report on executive session, let's get through those, then we'll move to the foreign trade zone. With the item regarding Sorenson, do I have a, a motion from the Commissioners?
Just a, a motion, a motion to negotiate, or to count, make a counteroffer.
So I have a motion to make a counteroffer on Joshua Sorenson versus Noises County Civil Service Commission, I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, the other two items for the, for the audience listening, we're only discuss and consultation, there's no action items needed, is that correct?
There is, on B, I don't know.
Oh, I'm so sorry, you're right, on B, I would entertain a motion regarding the claim of Mr. Williams.
I'm willing to deny the, the request.
There's a motion to deny the request, is there a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, and then it was, it was C that was just a consultation only, and so now we will go back to, item number A on executive session also relates to the item that we tabled for this purpose, let me get the right number.
4A3.
Thank you, 4A3, and to present this item louder, I think maybe you could just set the stage, and then we also have folks that are here that would like to make public comment regarding this agenda item, and then I think there'll be a motion.
Yes.
Edward, could you bring the clipboard back? Never mind, that's right.
Yes, the county judge received a request from Mr., from Gulf Copper Company, basically asking for a no objection letter in a required letter that is, that is submitted for a request for his property to be under the FTC, or, or what it's called, Foreign Trade Zone, and what the court is going to be evaluating is whether or not you grant that request of no objection letter.
And in this vein, do we have a discussion on this issue, I believe, I've got Mr. Rick Adams on 4A3, would you like to come forward at this time to offer any information or resource on this, on this agenda item?
Yes, ma'am, I was just deciding on presenting this.
No, no, it's...
Is there going to be a presentation of the...
No, sir, I was just going to ask if you have any comment about it, I can set the stage a little bit. Also, I know we have Bert Morehouse here, if he wants to set the stage, it might be nice to provide just background information, who is Gulf Copper, what is a type of commodity that would exist within the 70 acres that's the designated, you know, zone, just to provide, mainly for the, for the court.
That might be...
Absolutely, we could do that first. Bert, I am going to sign you up here for, for that. It just has to be very, it can be brief, but just...
Right. Okay, well, I think I've been able to meet with, well, I have been able to meet with all the Commissioners and the judge, sort of, sort of individually, and was graciously welcomed into each person's office, and I really appreciate all of your attention, and this has gotten like what I would consider like unprecedented attention, but I know it's important to you, so I support you in taking the time it needs to make your decisions. Gulf Copper, as you know, but I, you know, and I, and I forget that you've only heard this once, and I've done it a hundred times, so just to remind you, Gulf Copper is on the Ed Rochelle Foundation property over in, over in what's part of Port Aransas, which is Harbor Island, and so Gulf Copper's a 70-year-old vessel repair and otherwise maritime company, given the spiel to somebody in the audience, and, and they said, well, how much copper do you bring in? So I can see the kind of confusion that might cause, because we don't import copper. What we do is facilitate the import of mostly wind energy components, those blades and towers and, and generators that you see crowding the roads. And so some of our customers requested that we implement a foreign trade zone, and we've worked with the Port of Corpus Christi's Foreign Trade Zone Department to, to do so, and as I've explained to most of you, we go around to all the different taxing entities to get this letter of non...
No objection.
Letter of no objection, thank you. Letter of no objection, so that we can, you know, proceed on to the next phase of it, which is to work with Customs. U.S. Customs and Border Patrol has been to our facility, obviously multiple times, they come out every time a ship lands, but they've been there specifically for the evaluation of the facility as a foreign trade zone, and they think it would make a fine foreign trade zone, as do I, and I hope that you do too. So I'm always here to answer questions and hope that we can, you know, move forward with this.
And Bert, in the light most favorable, I, I want to acknowledge that you have provided the court information that because of the components that are sold as a point of sale there, that the City of Port Aransas derives a sales tax revenue on average, I think about 875,000, something like that?
A year.
A year.
Easily and going up.
I think that's the...
2020 is going to be huge, nobody, there's like a cliff for, for this wind trade, nobody knows what's going to happen, some say we're going to, we could fall off of it, and some say it's just a, a little drop, but no one knows after 2020, because the production tax credit might end.
Correct.
So in 2020, there's going to be quite a bit of income to the City of Port Aransas.
And so as a result of kind of researching and getting involved with this, you might also be able to confirm, I was able to, to look to see that the current valuation of the wind components is running around somewhere between 13 or 14 million dollars, and then therefore the property tax levy is about 39,000 dollars currently to Noises County, and that's just this Noises County, not everybody, not the hospital district, and not the...
Oh, right.
Farm-to-market.
You mean the, the property itself?
The ad valorem, that's correct.
Because we're only talking about exempting the personal property.
That's right, and that's what we're talking about with the 40,000 dollars.
That's the, that's the...
Personal property, ad valorem.
No, I don't know about the 40,000 dollar, you said the 13 million, what was the 13 million?
So it was my understanding that the, the, the valuation of the personal property levied a tax to Noises County of about 39,000 dollars. Do you think that's...
Could be, I don't know.
Well, that's what I got from the appraisal district.
Oh, okay, okay.
Do you happen to have anybody that...
See, you see, I don't know, because...
I understand, it's not yours to pay.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, okay, so I guess what I'm trying to just make everybody aware is, when the foreign trade zone 122 gets applied to the 70 acres, that is the amount that, that the county would give up, if you will.
Oh, no, that's not, that's not accurate, though, because what happens with this, well, I'm glad you asked that question, or made that statement, what happens with this cargo is it seeks the least cost opportunity for it, so if cargo wants to go to a foreign trade zone, and only a fraction of it does, if the cargo wants to go to a foreign trade zone, it's going to find one that doesn't, that, it's going to find one that doesn't tax it, and there are already 13 here, now, most of them are refineries and things, but none of them, wherever it goes, it's not going to be taxed, so if, if, for instance...
Right, but it's currently being taxed right now, I got that number from the appraisal district, that's what their, their levy is, that's what they're going to pay this year.
Oh, okay, well, but that, that's not in a foreign trade zone.
That's correct.
Right, right, you won't be giving that up, there'll be more than that this year, so only a small fraction goes into the foreign trade zone. It could be in that, I could take this, I could take this order right here...
Right.
And put it here, and then this one, and this is all in a foreign trade zone, if this is designated foreign trade zone, it's going to be exempt.
Right, so the 70 acres, what, what...
It doesn't matter if, whether it's 70 or the whole thing, if, I may, I may elect to put a piece in here that's, even though this is the 70 acres right here, I may take cargo in there and put it in there, and if it's not designated foreign trade zone, you're still going to get the tax revenue.
How does it get designated foreign trade zone?
It has to be, the way it gets designated foreign trade zone is that when it hits the shores of the United States, and its owner wants it to be in a foreign trade zone, it tells me, and I charge it something extra, because I have to hire Jennifer and a lot of other people to administer it, it's a pain, a royal pain, and so it gets there, and yes, it will be exempted, you wouldn't know about it unless it was there at the end of the year, which it probably would be, or they wouldn't even seek a foreign trade zone.
Right.
Okay, so, but this other, this other cargo, which is 75%, I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what we need to know, for example, so Jennifer, you represent the, the, the Customs, the brokerage house.
Just to go back a little bit.
Right.
The application for a foreign trade center, I mean, zone that is, that is going to be submitted by Gulf Copper, is for 70 acres out of 200.
Correct.
So not the whole land is going to be...
I, I agree, but right now, that's what we're, that is, do you know the amount of components that could be held on 70 acres?
I do not know that.
Okay, that's an important thing to, to, to figure out, because what, what we're, we're just going to operate on the presumption, just so you know, bear with us here, because it's not going bad for you here.
I'm not saying it is.
No, no, I know, I just want you to know that, that, that the...
I'm not sure I've made my point, if I thought I had, and I know it's, it's a little bit difficult to understand, but even if it, and I'm an engineer, so that makes it even worse.
Yeah.
You know, for everybody, I'm sorry, but even if, even if it was the whole 200 acres, I did 70 acres out of convenience, actually, I had 30, and Customs said, just make it this whole area, even if the whole 200 acres was designated a foreign trade zone, only, you're only, quote, giving up...
What is designated foreign trade?
The income of the item that's put in there.
So of the third, the, the tax, the appraisal district has given us a number that there's 13 million dollars worth of assets that you're, on the, on the 200 acres, the 70 acres, I'm not sure, do you know of that 13 million, how much of that would be designated in the foreign trade zone, because that's what she, I think she's calculating the loss based on.
Could be, but again, if it's going into a foreign trade zone, it's going to find one that it's, where it's not going to be, where it's not going to be charged, so...
Okay, so we don't know, I understand what you're asking, so maybe their current client has an inventory there of...
That is correct.
Right.
So what would be necessarily in the foreign trade zone? I don't know that, and I don't know that we would know that at the end of the year.
Yeah, that...
So in other words, you're saying just, I'm sorry.
Without, like, without having one and being able to see how much it gets used, I wouldn't be able to give you a definite answer for that, and going back to your question of how does it go in the zone, well, a customs broker comes in and they do a particular form...
Right.
To take it from the vessel to enter and admit it into that zone, so until, so that's what puts it in the zone and makes it zone status.
Correct, and I understand that, for us, it's a matter of calculating what ad valorem is lost, okay? And the answer is, is that ad valorem which is inside the foreign trade zone, which is unknown, so we're trying to quantify it, so that we can try to come together on an agreement that indeed this would be beneficial, you know, to an economic development perspective, but it's weighed against how many dollars are lost. What I can tell you is that if you call the appraisal district, they'll say to you, there's X dollars that are available to levy a personal property tax, which equals 40,000 dollars to you, just Noises County, maybe a little more if you put farm-to-market road in there, because we obviously control farm-to-market as well.
I wish you could operate on a bet, but my bet is that, well, really, even if I don't have a foreign trade zone, but that your income is going to go up substantially, not that much of this goes to the foreign trade zone. If you can, trust me, you, I can tell you that, I asked John LaRue as he left this morning, we have something in common, he just had soldier, shoulder surgery too, I asked him if it was anything that he thought was significant, and he said no. So I said, how much, and I mean, well, you could probably, she probably knows pretty well, too, but it's not, it's, I don't, I, I, if I had to give you a percentage, I'm going to say 10. I only have one customer, and that's Vestas, and they're my least customer. I only have one customer, and that's Vestas, and they're my least customer because they like rail, and we don't have rail. They are the only one that have even asked for it. And so that's what I know now.
But it's important to you, and that's why you're here, because it's a marketing tool in order to make sure that you can get that-
I wanna have every tool for that facility that I can-
So you're saying that, that the most likely tool is for wind components as, because the, the lay-down yard. And so what I'm trying to figure out is what the floor and the ceiling is for the county. Because once I figure out what the floor and ceiling is, we can make a recommendation that you should potentially have an FTZ zone for the purposes of all of the good reasons that we know.
Right.
But that there is a threshold that if, for example, you bring in a commodity that has a personal property value of a hundred million, just for the sake of saying it, that the county doesn't lose out on that ad valorem.
Right.
Okay? So I think that where, where I wanted to go is that I wanted to understand what components you, or what commodities you think would benefit by that seventy acres. And to me, it's wind, correct? And Vestas is coming in as your client now.
Yes.
Do you think Vestas would avail itself of the FTZ?
It won't, it, it's, it's not that, they, they're the only ones that ask for it.
Got it.
Yes, I think they would to some extent, for their components that fit. Like I said, mostly they favor rail, we can't offer them that.
Right.
But Siemens is our biggest client.
Yes, I'm aware. So if, if, if I'm, and I'm not a betting person at all, but if I'll go ahead for the high, purpose of the hypothetical, if you feel really confident about the income going up, and it may even affect your ad valorem as a property owner-
Correct.
And you're okay with that.
I've always thought that was a good thing to pay taxes, usually that meant you were-
Okay, because I do want you to know that, and I think you've acknowledged that, and I want everyone to hear that, that sometimes it goes like this.
In fact, you'll recall that I told you that I would be willing to work with the appraisal district to help identify who's there.
Boy, they, they listen, they're gonna be on your doorstep.
Good, because that's not easy.
Right.
But I probably, yeah.
So, so in that vein, if we were to make a recommendation at the, the court to, to me, there's three options, Mr. Morehouse. It's you grant the no objection letter, you don't grant the objection letter, or number, oh, door number three is the one that I like the most, which is you grant the no objection, but you make it contingent upon a, an agreement that within a very short amount of time, since you have been patient and waiting, and I'm saying within thirty days, gets executed, that we come up with kind of a floor and a ceiling. For instance, you've made me feel good that fourteen million would most likely never be in the seventy acres. But if and if it were, if, if I said, what about Mr. Morehouse if it was eighteen million dollars? And the county said, we could live with eighteen million dollars worth of value being inside this foreign trade zone? You know, could we negotiate that on a separate agreement? Because the federal trade zones, I mean, the foreign trade zones are documents that are executed with port authorities. So we don't have standing inside there. But what we could do to make sure it was enforceable, we could have a separate agreement, which, by the way, that's how it's done, according to our lawyers at the Port of Houston. There's kind of a boilerplate document that would allow us to say that there would be some limiting factors, of which you could always come back to court and we could amend. And those limiting factors would be, but we feel, we'll take your bet that we'll do better, but we're gonna hedge our bet and say that eighteen million dollars worth of property, I'm just throwing out a number, okay? Seventeen, eighteen million dollars worth of property. Right now, I can tell you the appraisal district has fourteen that they levy. But we could say seventeen million or eighteen million dollars worth of property is our ceiling. And that way, the court could, could see how this process works. Did it indeed raise ad valorem, which is good for the county? Did it indeed raise sales tax, which is wonderful for Port Aransas? Did it indeed bring you the market share that you desire? And then did we cap whatever potential liability exists in our mind? Did we protect the county from losing ad valorem that you say probably wouldn't even be recuperated? Does that make sense to you? Does that make sense?
Do you want to do some type of agreement?
That's correct.
For them to pay in lieu of the taxes you may be-
Only if they've passed a major threshold of eighteen million dollars. Because right now, under, on your two hundred acres, you've got fourteen million dollars worth of tax you don't pay, but that, that your customers pay in personal property tax, right? And that tax generates about forty thousand dollars to Noises County, okay? And so what we were concerned about, and maybe we're wrong, but from visiting with our attorneys, that if we declared this foreign trade zone, that seventy acres, if you had a value inside that seventy acres that then gets taken off the tax rolls, okay, we would lose that ad valorem theoretically.
Well, you do, and so, but you also lose it on the, all of the other foreign trade zones that are here.
Right, but let's not, you don't wanna go down that road with me, because I've got a, a, too good of an argument, you'll lose. So let's just stick to this one, because you're winning on this one. You just have to trust me.
Yeah, but, because what I think she's trying to set is, what she's trying to get to is a floor. She's saying, right now, it's fourteen million, right? Because y'all, y'all don't wanna do a pilot, which I understand. And, and she, what she's trying to come up with is a way to do a, 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 a non-offensive pilot, like a pilot that says, okay, you have, I thought it was thirteen, but let's say it's fourteen million. So the pilot wouldn't kick in until you got all the way to eighteen million dollars, if it kicked in at that point. In other words, so you'd still walk out, that's what she's proposing at this point.
Okay, I'll tell you what, I'm not used to negotiating in front of a court.
And, and I understand that, and, and I'm not trying to get you to commit to something, she's just going out of an idea.
And I don't wanna negotiate either, these are hypotheticals. What I was going to suggest is that I believe you when you tell Port Aransas. And it means so much to me personally, having gone through Hurricane Harvey and seeing the devastation, and as county judge, doing everything in my power to make certain that they find their way to the road to recovery. And I mean that. I, I live it every single day, looking for dollars for them. Because of that, and because I believe it can provide the economic development. I believe you on the wind components because I've just come from the Port of Corpus Christi's commission, and I know what you say is true about the upward trend for wind coming to our, to our area. Because of all of that, I agree, where I have to make sure I don't have heartburn, is that if my tax appraisal district says, you're gonna take forty thousand dollars off the roll, I have to make certain that I'm also a steward for the regular Joe, Mary taxpayer and say, how can I make sure that that doesn't get, I, I've already weighed the cost benefit, and I feel like it's in the best interest. But how do I make sure that, that those dollars don't go up here? And, and, and forgive me, but because it's deep water coming to you at fifty-four feet, something that no other port in the Gulf Coast has, I have to make sure that today, it might be wind components, but that seventy acres could be something else in the future. It could be. I don't know that it, what, what your thoughts are or plans or future, but you know what I know about the energy business? All energy, renewables and fossil, it changes constantly.
Yes, it does.
And if you have a foreign trade zone that's good for you, and you know it's all about profitability, you're gonna do everything in your power to make sure that's a profitable business. So we need to just make sure that there's a ceiling that we can accept. So it's good for you. If I said to you that the seventy acres has twenty million dollars worth, I'm sorry, what was our number? Fourteen million dollars worth of, of value.
I, I think I can help you.
Then-
Here's the thing.
Then that's all ceiling, you know?
If the, if, if, it, it could easily have more than that. And so when it exceeds that, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be competitive. These people are gonna have to pay more to come in there. And there's not that much benefit to our property over other ports and other properties. That's what I'm trying to avoid. The opportunities for this cargo are to land in these foreign trade zones and, and not, other than administrative costs, not pay tax on this stuff. That's what they do. That's part of what they're looking for. So they're all on a ship, they all have choices. It doesn't cost that much more to go a few miles. They'll just sail on by. So it would be, it would be pretty pointless. That's all I, that's, that's, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not looking for any kind of agreements because it won't, I'm, my purpose is to make that place competitive. Not just with the Port of Corpus Christi, but other places on the Gulf Coast, Galveston, Brownsville. And, and my problem is, one, I'd pay taxes. That property is the biggest taxpayer in Port Aransas. So I have a thing I have to overcome there. And then, you know, that's, that's one of the big ones. And, and, you know, we're, we're a for-profit company, yes. It's, it's, it's not exempt property, no. My, some of my competitors, most of them are ports, and they don't pay taxes. So I have to overcome that. And then they, all the other, you ask her not to go down some road, I'm not sure which one it is, I don't really care. It's none of my business. But my business is that these, when they go into these other foreign trade zones, that, that cargo doesn't pay tax. So I'm trying to remain competitive or be competitive, and that's really all I'm trying to do here. Outside of that, our property pays a lot of taxes. Our, our real estate, the seventy acres, the two hundred acres pays a lot of taxes. And I, I think that should count for something. So I'm not really looking for any kind of special treatment, and I'm not looking for any kind of special agreements. I think it's a yes or no. And if I can't have what other people have, you're putting me at a competitive disadvantage.
Well, but, but with all due respect, you have more than what people have because you don't have a franchise agreement with, with a port authority. You have the luxury-
The port doesn't have one with itself.
The luxury-
It operates cargo eight and nine.
But they're sanctioned by the state of Texas to do so, and they have the right. In, in your situation, you're getting the advantage of having a, a channel that's dredged two fifty-four feet without having any compensation for that. The port authorities have to pay their pro-rata share for deepening and widening, which is a benefit to you there, which is a good benefit. I'm glad for you. But that's a benefit that they have to pay, and that's why they charge tariffs so that they can have the revenues that allows them the ability to go out and get revenue bonds so they can pay their fair share of these hundred millions of dollars. And I'm just saying to you that the reason I didn't wanna go down that road is because all of the foreign trade zones that have been issued have been issued basically through the Port of Corpus Christi for port authority customers who have either franchise agreements or who pay warfage or dockage or some tariff that's posted. To me, that's very, very unique. I want to be helpful here. What I was trying to articulate, I didn't think had any downside for you at all. The, the motion that was being contemplated was that we pass, we recommend that there be no objection subject to your company working with Sandy Gomez, who is our, and Loura Jimenez, all of a sudden, I forgot, she is our, she's with Hush Blackwell, and she is, this is what she does quite a bit with the port authority in, in Houston, and she has kind of a boilerplate type of agreement that could be tailored. All we wanted to do was to recognize, and I don't know if there's a disconnect here. I wanted there to be a recognition in case I was wrong, that we are getting ad valorem. That's what the appraisal district says to me. We're getting ad valorem. And when I put the foreign trade zone in action under your request for no objection, we lose that. Is that true or false?
You lose what's in the foreign trade zone.
That, that's correct, but when, that's correct. So, but, but we're gonna assume that some of those wind components would seek the FTZ, right?
Correct, and they may, you lose whatever is there year-end in, that's been-
Right.
Into the foreign trade zone. You still collect the personal and everything that's outside.
I understand that.
And I understand what you're, where you're coming from, and I understand what you're requesting.
All I was trying to do is give you a ceiling. And you know what I was trying to do? I was trying to give it to you so high that it would never even affect you. Because the idea here is to make sure that there's a threshold that, that after I leave, there's a precedence for foreign trade zones that aren't just blanketedly given. The reason I was given a, a, a letter, Mr. Adams, I was given a letter by the mayor of Port Aransas who took issue with the fact that in his perception, that they'd always been given. This is true. You know why? Because there wasn't one person on this third floor who could even with any specificity explain the pros and cons of a foreign trade zone. So when I took office, I institute new protocols. If you cannot explain it to two people, you do not understand it. And when you don't understand something, you're not making good policy. My effort in bringing Ms. Gomez was to educate all taxing entities, which I think has been a very positive thing going forward. I want to be able to, to create a threshold so that it's not a blanket foreign trade zone when later in time, it's no longer wind components, it's something else of value that's worth a hundred million dollars inside of seventy acres. Is that preposterous? Maybe, but it's equally as possible. So all I was trying to do is put a ceiling on it so that whoever wanted to, just bear with us here, that there might be some dollars lost. But if you don't ever think you'll get to twenty million, you won't even have to worry about it.
Judge, would your, would your motion or proposal have a ceiling in it, or is it just to have me work with her?
It's, it would, I gave, we gave direction as a court with a ceiling.
Okay, I, I don't, I, I mean, you, you can, you can vote that, but I'm, I won't accept it. There may be a, there may be a, there may be an agreement that could be workable. But I mean, I, I, there may be, you know, I could work with her, I'm too much of a hothead, as you can tell by listening to me this morning, or this afternoon. But anyway, I, I could possibly work something out with her that may not have been thought about before, but it would be in regard to a percentage.
Listen, I wanna work with you. That's, that's my message here today. And let me tell you that I think it's the will of the court, based on what I heard in executive session. And it's also the will of the court to do it timely. And I will tell you, we meet every two weeks. But it is my pledge as the county judge that, that, that we would not go beyond two weeks to get you the right answer, because papering it is nothing compared to the agreement between the meeting of the minds. And, and you could work with, well, I'm not gonna speak for her, because I don't know her schedule, but she's pretty accommodating.
I'm not in that, I'm not in that desperate of a hurry.
Right.
I asked him to get it on the agenda because it had kinda drug out a little bit, but I'm not in that desperate of a hurry.
Okay, but we will pledge-
And y'all are, and I appreciate that, I really do. But the, the ceiling, like you've, you've talked about, it wouldn't work, but a percentage, and that would back up my bet. A percentage would back up my bet that you will prosper.
Okay.
Hugely. Because I'd like to have three hundred million dollars worth of stuff out there, and I'd like to have you collect on a major percentage of it, okay? So, but if I have that ceiling and the ceiling's too low, it's just gonna be as if there weren't one. It would just be as if there were no ceiling or floor. So those are the kinds of things that I'm thinking about. And if, if I don't have a foreign trade zone, then my ability overall is not to be that good.
Right.
One way or the other, you guys are gonna benefit greatly because that ten percent, maybe it's twenty, but you know what? It's not huge.
Right. Well, in the spirit of cooperation, it would be my own motion, so I can put it right back on me so you can deliver to the mayor of Port Aransas, that my motion would be that there would be a no objection letter submitted on behalf of the county, contingent upon you working with the county attorney and presenting something for October thirtieth court. If that's too fast for Mrs. Jimenez, then it, maybe it be presented on the November sixth court. And we can work forward. This way, you have certainty, you have a deliverable, but it does not bind the court until there is a meeting of the minds that works with you. And, and you can work also with Ms. Gomez and Ms. Jimenez at the same time. It's when you, we asked me to repeat it, it's when I start feeling like my age. Contingent upon- A negotiated agreement between Gulf Copper and, and, and the county attorney, but with the assistance of Ms. Gomez, because she actually has used these types of agreements before. And, and as I understand it, there's no privity of contract between us and a foreign trade zone. That privity relies, the, the, the port authorities are given FTZs, and that privity's there. So whether an agreement is enforced or not, has to be enforced by a port authority, just for your edification. And that's interesting because that means that whatever we decide- And that's interesting, because that means that whatever we decide, we'll present it back to the port authority, and they will give it its blessing, okay? And that's so that they would have enforcement on that contract. Look, I believe this is the best that we can do with the facts as I know them today, but I am an incredibly open-minded person.
Good with it, I'm good with it.
Good. I'm open-minded enough to know that if we're wrong with our facts, you'll help us, you know?
You are a betting person.
But I just want to make sure you walk out, understand, knowing, and I want to, and if Rick, you want to say something too, I just want to make sure-
Yes, Rick signed up. I do have, for the clerk, I have a motion and a second, and I know this is tricky, but Ms. Jimenez has been writing it down. Rick, forgive me, Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioner. So again, it probably has become pretty apparent now that I'm here, again, greetings from Mayor Bouillon and City Manager Parsons, who could not be here. But obviously, the, the city did want to say that we, we are in support of the FTZ. We, we have realized since the initiation of the windstorm, or the wind, the wind plant components being on that yard, anywhere from 50 to, to $100,000 a month in sales tax, that clearly was a, a windfall for, for a, a sales tax balance that had been decimated post Hurricane Harvey, so it has been, it's, it's been good. And, and, and we don't come here just supporting it for that simple reason. We did look into the, the ideas behind the FTZs, and we, again, what we seem to recognize is that if those components were to seek an FTZ elsewhere, and it may not even be in the region, it could go to Galveston or Houston, we all lose. We lose the sales tax revenue, you, you, you lose whatever ad valorem taxes there would have been on those components that were there. So it, it seemed to be just kind of a, a, a complete loss. But I do appreciate your, your willingness to compromise. We do understand that there's, there's always great potential, things change, that's the one thing we've, we've seen over the years. But, but again, the city obviously would like for you to, to find a way through this to, to reach a compromise. It seems like you're certainly willing to do that, and, and I know that obviously, the mayor has reached out to you, and, and we certainly understand the explanation. We look at it as, as everyone up to now had been approved, but you, you provide a very good explanation as to why that might have been, and that was then, this is now. We certainly understand that. But again, I do want to say that the, the city does strongly support reaching something that, that creates that FTZ there. It's certainly, certainly, I think, a, a great opportunity for the city, and I, I think would be a good opportunity for the county as well, all the tax paying, all the tax, taxing entities involved. So thank you for your time.
Rick, if you can, I just wanted to say to Bert too, I just, I want to make sure y'all take back, primarily so that I don't get a, another email from the mayor, that-
You can promise that.
No, I know, but that you, huh?
Thank you.
No, no, that you articulate that the court really is trying to make sure this gets done right, and, and, and the percentage may be a better, you know, that's, that may be a better option, I don't know. I mean, that, that, I think you're right, it's not, what's not, wasn't right to try to, and we weren't trying to make you negotiate in front of the court. I was just trying to articulate what I think she was trying to do is to get some other options out there that, that were fair for you and fair for everyone else, because that, the last thing that the judge or this court wants to do is for Port Aransas to, to lose that sales tax windfall, or for Gulf Copper not to be able to be competitive. And, and, you know, one of the things we discussed was, you know, things, things have changed, and unfortunately, Gulf Copper was the first one in with way, with kind of the new way of looking at things, and, and they're not better than our worst, they're just different. And so everybody's really working hard to do this, and, 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 and I was happy when I, and I, and I was kidding about the, the email, America can send me all the ones he wants, I'm, I'm being funny. I mean, I, I hadn't, I didn't know that it was a problem until the mayor said, hey, you know, what's going on with this? And I said, well, I, I thought the negotiations were going on, and so my bad if I didn't do anything or wasn't responsive like I was supposed to be, because I certainly thought that those negotiations were ongoing.
Let me say, this, this sales tax thing was an unintended consequence. I had no idea this stuff was taxed.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and just for the record, I'm going to move on, but for the record, no one's losing any sales tax because they're, I mean, you're getting it now. We have no FTC, and you're getting it now. So, so just, but it's a perk that we're mindful that if the marketing works, theoretically you would get more, and then you could theoretically get more. Look, I get it, this is called economic development. I 100% believe in it, and that's why I'm willing to do this. I just need to make sure there's some, some balance.
And I believe we-
So thank you all, I appreciate it.
I believe we can get there, so thank you all very much.
Okay, so in the effort of, of a 3 o'clock bewitching hour, that's an insider issue for us here at the court, we have Maria with Grants, and she's going to basically-
We need to vote on that, Judge.
I'm so sorry, you're right. All the, we have a, I'm calling the question, it was been motioned and seconded regarding the FTZ. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, Maria, all we're doing here is, is considering the submission of the grant application regarding our Veterans Treatment Court grant.
Yeah, so normally, this would have been on consent agenda, because it's just an applica, grant application, but since it's a new project, we wanted to kind of highlight it. And originally, Judge Poulter was supposed to be here to present this, he is unable to make it. The Veterans Treatment Court has been in operation, but it has never received grant funding, uh, uh, applied for by Nuasis County. CSCD did receive small grants in about $75,000 for a probation officer to help with the veterans treatment cases. Their numbers are currently, in the past year, 170 veterans were identified by the Nuasis County Jail as being eligible for this program. Unfortunately, because of their current levels of staffing and capabilities, they're only able to take about 40 to 45 veterans out of that number.
Okay.
So they're seeking for Nuasis County now to be kind of the lead agent for this, and expand their services. It will be for two temporary part-time positions, vehicle intoxicizers, alcohol and GPS monitoring for the veterans, training for all staff, as well as some counseling and treatment services. There is no match required for this grant. It will be submitted to the Texas Veterans Commission with your approval for about, we're still kind of working out the budget, but it will total around $300,000.
And let's just make sure our legislative team knows about this, and do I have a motion? I got a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. DeBach, the next one, I believe, is up for you, it's a dune walkover permit, you and Juan. And this is a permit, it's a, it's a 90-day permit extension.
That's-
Is there anything out of order here? Is it all pretty much the-
It's pretty much all.
In order? Is there a motion? Do you, you approve recommendation?
We're approving recommendation.
They are approving it.
So moved.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. There is a reward in heaven, you see, DeBach, you just keep on waiting, and then it goes by so fast like that. Thank you for your patience. Presentation regarding a multitude of things, everybody from, from, on McKenzie Annex, and I asked for this because I wanted to make sure we had an update, so everybody knows that this is very exciting. Do you want to tell everybody that we have a certificate of completion?
Yes, ma'am, we do, we do have a certificate of completion for the McKenzie Annex dormitory. We do have the actual, well, the actual completion date was not due till December of 2019, till the end of this year. I know that we had coordinated with the contractor, and also the, some testing that needed to be done in order to expedite the process. So we, all that was completed in September of 26, 2019, and that's when we got the, the C of O, the Certificate of Vacuum C.
Okay, so we're ready, and, and you've, you've notified the sheriff?
The sheriff has been notified, and we had a meeting here earlier about it.
And ADA has been, Carol Pruitt has looked at this, and we're all good to go?
There's a few items that need to be addressed. They're, they're minor judge, and right now, we're looking to see how we can correct those items with the, with the architect and the contractor, and once-
Is that gonna, is that going to inhibit us moving in?
Well, Tony, what?
I, I don't think so.
It shouldn't.
You should be able to get those done quickly.
Yeah, and we're, and we're looking to see if we can get it done within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, what I'd like to do is on October 30th, I want you to tell me what we were able to accomplish, and let's work, let's pretend that we needed it like next week.
The blessing of the ADA too.
Well, that's the whole thing. Carol Pruitt's already come and looked, and he's obviously identified something.
And another thing that they're waiting on also is that jail standards needs to come and do their, their walkthrough.
Okay, so then you've got time if jail standards, has jail standards been notified?
Yeah, they've been notified.
Okay, let's make Carol, let's make the ADA a high priority here.
It is, it is.
Okay, great. And then will you proceed on to the courthouse, please, number three?
The, the-
Oh, I'm sorry, you want to talk about this, okay.
Temporary, yeah, McKenzie Annex generator and fire protection, all those have, we've done the temporary generator, it has been installed, and we also done the fire protection also has been completed, and so that's part also of the Certificate of Vacuum C. And those are the dates.
Okay. I want to take this out of order because it's, it's the, it's a deductive change order. Why don't you address that right now? That's item number four.
Yes, ma'am. The deductive change order, we're doing the deductive change order number 14 for the McKenzie Annex jail, and we're recommending to approve the, it's 1,001 for the deduction.
So moved. I've got a motion.
Second.
I've got a second. Do you have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I just thought that made sense to do it together there. And I really thank you. For those of you that don't know, Juan was asked to really prioritize McKenzie Annex by the sheriff and myself because of jail overcrowding, and we really, we set our own deadline and we met it, and I'm grateful, because it shows that when we do have deadlines, that we can meet them. Okay, so now we're going to go to elevators, chillers, and generators.
Yes, ma'am, this is just a quick update on the, on the elevators. The projected completion date is, we're looking at May 2020, probably May, April, Judge. And then the chillers, here also, Judge, we're looking probably also April. I know it takes time, by the time we order the equipment, the equipment gets ordered, you know, it takes anywhere from three to four months, so by the time that they do the installation, so that's where, that's where there is the reason why we're looking at April 2020 for completion.
For elevators?
For the chillers.
For the chillers, and then also for the elevators, Judge, because-
May, May 2020.
May, May 2020.
Okay.
And then with the generators for the, for the courthouse, I mean, we're still waiting on approval for funding, so once we get the approval for funding, we can move with the, with the generators. Judge, I did pass out-
Uh, excuse me, on the generators for courthouse, you're saying waiting for funding, you mean on the grant?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's for the grant.
And do we have a timetable for Maria on that? She left, okay.
She's, she's back.
Oh, hey.
No, we don't have a timetable just yet, we're following up.
No expectations?
No.
No understanding, okay. Okay, just for the purposes of, of marking down, elevator modernization, and chillers, and cooling towers are all coming out of the, the borrowing. Okay? Those are identified in your CIP, and those were identified as high, high priority. So, okay.
Judge, I did pass out, it's a weekly project summary report. This is just a sample copy of a, a report that we'll be submitting to all the commissioners. It'll be specific for your project, for like instance, this one's for the RV Park over that IB McGee. We do have, this is a detailed project summary scope, it has like the total completion of the award contract, if any change orders have been part of the, part of the project, and then it'll have pretty much everything that's in here about who the engineer is on the project, and then it'll kind of give you an updated of what happened this week on the project, say for example, and then it'll update you what will happen in the next week for, for future. So it's a, it's a project summary report, and, and for your projects, it'll be submitted to y'all on a weekly basis. Our staff is going to be preparing this, I'll be reviewing it, and then I'll be sending it out to y'all on a, either Thursday or Friday afternoon.
Very good, very good. Stay with us here on the, I think this is just, we've kind of already talked about this quite a bit, but this is the actual, this is, you need action from us to consider the, to solicit quotes for the actual installation of the train water chiller units. So we've already approved here in court, the units themselves, buying them from the buy board, but now this is the labor piece of it. Is that correct?
That is correct, Judge.
And so all you need is action to go out for RF, you're going to go-
Or for, for proposals, or for, for proposals.
You're going to go for RFP? Michael, is that correct? We're, it's an RFP for the, for the labor on the chillers?
Or proposals.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, so moved, and second, second, all those in favor say aye, Jack.
Aye.
Aye, okay. That's going to be important to get those quotes in advance, even though it's going to be a first quarter, we're, we're going to want to have a lot of detailed conversations with those installers. So I think that's very good. So the next piece of it is, do you have anything further, Juan?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I, I'm just going to move on. We did D1, so D2 in purchasing, Michael, is the, it's an addendum to the master service agreement for the buy board contract for Rico, that's the copy or company.
Yes.
Is there anything exciting about this?
Well, this is an item that's normally only on consent, but the reason we wanted to bring it up this time is because we're actually doing a new machine for the ballot, let's see what's the name of it.
The election?
Yes, it's for the elections department, and it's a machine that's going to help them with printing color envelopes and stuffing the envelopes as well, and along with some additional labor. And, and in addition, this is, extends our maintenance agreement for Jason and Ramon, who operate the copy center for us. We've also had a part-time individual working for us down there named Ashley, and she's going to go full-time with this agreement.
Great name.
And we also, every quarter, Jason and I go through a monthly operation review of the individual copies that are being done, and we've noticed that there, we had an allotment for about a million plus black and white copies, and we've been coming in significantly under that. So, and, and then on the other side, the color copies have gone up, up beyond what we had in the original allotment, and so we have overage charges that occur. So we've adjusted the black and white copies downward and increased the color copy allotment, and through that, we're achieving a savings of about $11,000 on the black and white side of it, and then somewhere around $14,000 in the color side, so basically, it's, it's pretty much a net zero change in terms of cost, but we're getting additional labor force, and, and we're being more efficient with the use of the copies. So it's like, you know, you don't want to buy a plan that's bigger than what you need, so we've right-sized the plan to what the county's actual usage has been over the last year.
That's good.
Need a motion?
These efficiencies are awesome. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
And a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Keep finding them, Michael, keep finding them, it all adds up.
Good job.
Thank you. The auditor, we have two budget change orders and a law library fund change. Let's take the budget change order, and then the law library, and then let's end with the financial report. If you could take it, take us through it.
Okay. Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners, I am asking your approval for budget change order number 24 for FY 1819. Most of them are routine, I just wanted to highlight the information technology request for transfer of budget from their budget to the capital outlay, and this is for some hardware for firewall. It's the hardware that's being paid out of, and it's a pending PO awaiting to be expedited. We're asking your request for the approval of this budget change order.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Okay, in addition, we're asking for-
Excuse me, that was not an, that budget change order just for us, that's just really transferring from one department to another, it's not an additional.
Changing the budget.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
For budget change order number one for the FY 1920, they're just routine change orders, and I'm requesting your approval on them.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. And then tell us about the change fund.
Okay, the library director, Ida Garza, had requested an increase in the fund, change fund. Currently, it's at $8, and she has requested it to up it to $50. And the auditor's office has approved that.
And that's, so it's recommended. So, do I have a motion? And a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Same sign. Okay.
Okay, Judge, on the monthly financial report, I did discover some errors on the financials. So, I conferred with Dale, and we are going to table it into the next commissioner's court. It could have been an easy, like, something that didn't refresh, but the financials are incorrect. We may just have to replace some pages, but at this time, we ask to be tabled.
Motion to table.
I've got a motion, and I just need a second. Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Same sign. If you would be so good as to get it to me way in advance of court, I prefer it as soon as possible for my office. And then, and then we can bring it to court for a ratification, for approval. Okay, that actually concludes our entire session. Just in the nick of time, I need to go, oh, my goodness, John. Sorry, John, come on forward. We put your item.
You have two items. That one?
That's right.
Also, a Yard Four. I don't know if you want to go back to that, or just?
Right, no, John, come on in, come on.
Judge, I want to motion to table that Yard Four deal again.
Yeah, and I'm, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Same sign. And John, come on forward. Your item had to do with a consent agenda item that was pulled, and that was item Q. And we were talking about the, the lease agreements, and you are now going to have some questions from Commissioner Vaughn.
I forgot my questions, but I'm going to try and remember them. I'll go really quick.
Price.
I just see how the prices are. You got 120 on something, 180, 250, because I went back and looked. Just when I'm looking at the, okay. Did y'all ever update it?
Yes, ma'am, that's updated from what we were charging. I went through, I called all the airports within a 40-mile radius. And we were probably, we were in the middle, but on the lower end. So, by raising each hanger up $25, it pushes us up farther in the middle, but towards the upper end. We're cheaper than the Rockport Airport and the Ingleside Airport. Of course, they provide more services than we do. But we're more expensive than the Bishop and Kingsville and stuff like that, because we have better facilities.
I'm just amazed that they, these hangers are going this cheap.
There they are.
I, I just, it just bottles my mind. And you have a waiting list, right?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
So, you could, if you raised it, you could probably still rent it.
Over in, they have a new manager in the Ingleside Airport. They switched to 30 cents a square foot, and there's a bunch of tenants that are upset. They all want to move over here, so, because they, they send the hangers to where it's getting, they're, they're out of where they should have been for the surrounding area.
Because of time, I'm just going to make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Second.
And motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And John, you're going to come back on a subsequent agenda and really talk about how we're going to get a good analysis of the airport and comprehensive, and you're working on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And the next thing is adjournment in memory of, and we have one today.
Judge, one, Mamie Stoner, wife of Alan Stoner.
Oh, my goodness.
Passed away peacefully at the Mirador Assisted Living Center on October 11th, four days short of her 89th birthday. Mamie was, for many, many years, my neighbor. Lived next door, she and Alan did. Wonderful, wonderful lady. And her husband certainly will, will, will miss her, as will the rest of her family. So, condolences to the Stoner family on the loss of Mamie.
I want to echo that. They're wonderful people and huge, huge philanthropists to the church and to incarnate word, and they were wonderful. So, hearing no other adjournments, I'm, forgive me.
Deborah, Debbie Garza passed away. She was with the Westside Business Association. Knew her for many years. It was, it seemed a very sudden illness that took her. And so, condolences to her and to her family, and of course, to all the members of the WBA who are still reeling from loss from Linda, and now from Deborah.
She was actually a former past president of WBA, Deborah was. So, our condolences to the Gotta Saff family, and we are, we stand adjourned now. And the time is 3:05. Thank you all.